Can somebody grab Candace real quick?
I think she was waiting on the bathroom.
She's, she's starting our meeting.
Oh, Elizabeth isn't here.
You want me to go see where she's at?
Yeah, they're back there.
All right, here comes, they're coming.
Here we go, all right. All right, welcome everyone to the Richland Hills City Council meeting for December eighth, two thousand twenty-five. First order of business will be the invocation and pledges of allegiance, and I've asked our city manager Candace Edmondson to lead us in open motion. Y'all rise please.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we come together this evening grateful for the opportunity to serve, for this community, this moment, and the responsibility entrusted to us. We ask your blessing over the city of Richland Hills, over our residents, neighborhoods, and the families who call this place home. May we always be a community marked by care for one another and a shared commitment to the future. Guide our mayor and city council as they deliberate and make decisions tonight. Grant them wisdom and discernment that their actions reflect what is right and in the best interest of this community, both now and for generations to come. We lift up our city staff and ask that you provide them wisdom, confidence, and strength as they carry out the work of public service. May they continue to serve with integrity, professionalism, and compassion in all they do. We pray for a spirit of cooperation and mutual respect among elected officials, staff, and the community we serve. May teamwork, trust, and open hearts guide our work together. Finally, we give thanks for the privilege of service and the relationships built along the way. May Richland Hills continue to strive to serve with humility, work together as one team, lead with respect and integrity, hold a clear vision for the future, and empower others in all that we do. May the city continue to grow with purpose, unity, and hope. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, first item will be recognition of the seventy-fifth anniversary committee. Candace Edmondson is coming in.
Well, as we close out our big seventy-fifth year, the council wanted to take one more opportunity to recognize the very special group of volunteers who made all of this possible. Without their vision and their support and kind of their guidance and all of the programs and events and activities that we put on this year, this would not have been as special of a moment. And so I think council wanted them to come forward, congratulate them. We do have a little gift for them. A little, a photo book of all the activities from the seventy-fifth celebration for each of you to have.
Great job y'all. We love these books too.
Come on forward guys.
I'll let the mayor hand these out.
Probably going to be a picture involved in this.
Chantel and Lindsay.
You guys did a great job. It's greatly appreciated.
I can take the extras now.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Do one more. Thank you.
Thank you guys. I had a blast.
Okay, all right, the next item. A while back I was looking at maybe purchasing a flag for the city that was flown over the Capitol. So I contacted Craig Goldman, our representative in Washington, and they will sell you a flag. So we have a flag that came, that was flown over the Capitol building. So I want to present that tonight. This, it's in recognition of the city of Richland Hills and it symbolizes our community's commitment to service, civic pride, and the shared values that bind us as Americans. Along with the flag, we are presenting the official certificate of authenticity issued by Congressman Goldman documenting the purpose of the flag's flight. On behalf of the city of Richland Hills and City, Richland Hills City Council, it's my privilege to present this flag and certificate to the city of Richland Hills in appreciation of their contributions to our community. I'd like to have the fire chief and our police chief, city manager, and our city council out there for a picture, because I'd like to send this to Craig Goldman's office too, so he can see that it meant something to us. We're going up, yeah, let's all go down front. We'll get city staff in front there. Put city staff in front.
So I think everybody needs to be on the platform. Yeah. But those are tall going back.
I figured that's what was going to happen.
John, go this way just a little bit. They go, okay. Make for good. Okay, we'll take a couple. One, two, three. Okay, a couple more.
All right. Anyway, it's kind of beneath you. If y'all want to buy a flag, you can get one that's flown over the Capitol, gentlemen. Nice thought. I was hoping to get one that was blown on the day of our seventy-fifth anniversary, but I got in there a little bit too late for that, so. Anyway. But if you need a flag for your house, you can buy them there as well, so.
What would that cost be?
I think I spent like eighty-five dollars plus then the case too, but then that included the flag for my house too.
Okay.
So.
Good idea. Yes.
Yeah.
It's flown over the Capitol.
Flown over the Capitol. All right, next item will be employee service awards. And first will be for Sheena McAcrin.
Need a backup photographer.
Oh, that would be awesome if it was a selfie.
All right, presentation of twenty-year service pin. That's pretty awesome, so you get four diamonds now, so it's great. Sheena McAcrin began her career with the city of Richland Hills in two thousand and five as a patrol officer for the city of the Richland Hills Police Department. Over the course of her service, she has held a wide range of assignments and responsibilities. She currently serves as a support services manager overseeing technology for all city departments. She is also a sworn member of the police department and supports community services and programs within the police department and serves as the public, city's public information officer. Sheena holds a master peace officer certification from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and has completed extensive specialized training, earning numerous certificates and professional recognitions over their years. In two thousand sixteen, she was recognized by her peers and received the police department's Officer of the Year Award and is two thousand twenty-two receive the chief's sworn award. Sheena also served six years in the United States Army Reserves in a military police combat, which included a year-long deployment to Iraq from two thousand and three to two thousand and four in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. Sheena is a graduate of the Institute for Law Enforcement Administration's Ninety-fourth School of Police Supervision and the Fifty-sixth School of Executive Leadership. She is currently pursuing her bachelor's degree at Tarleton State University. Sheena is married to Wayne McAcrin, a police officer with the North Richland Hills Police Department. Together, they have five children, including their oldest, who is currently serving in the United States Navy. Outside of work, Sheena and Wayne enjoy spending time with their family and serving in ministry at their church. Thank you so much for Sheena for staying with Richland Hills and making this a career here too.
I've been clicking pictures for it. I just kept pressing.
Next, we have Public Services Manager Stephanie Flores with fifteen years, so you get three diamonds, so. Stephanie Flores began her career with the city of Richland Hills in December two thousand and ten as a library assistant. Stephanie was promoted to her current position as a public service manager in two thousand and fourteen. She led the circulation team in meeting the needs of our patrons, selects, orders, and catalogs our videos, video collection. She has assisted in creating, planning, and presenting a variety of programs for the library. Her favorite is Haunted Stacks, which celebrated its eleventh year in two thousand and twenty-five. Stephanie enjoys working with and for the community of Richland Hills. It is always interesting trying new ideas in search to fulfill their needs and wants. Richland Hills Public Library wants to provide more than just books or videos. We want to provide experiences. Our programs are just thirty to sixty minutes, but we always hope to spark an interest that will lead our patrons to learning something new. Very good. If you'd like to come forward, it'd be great. Okay, next item will be citizen appearances and public comments, citizens and attendants at the meeting. Does anybody want to speak during this time, or do they want to speak to an item? All right, I'll skip over that then. Next item is the consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff recommendations. Item A, approved minutes from the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five city council regular meeting, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five special called meeting, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five morning workshop, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five afternoon workshop, November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five workshop, and the November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five special called meeting. Item B, approve of replat for the property described as lots one R and two R, block A, J, and D, properties addition, otherwise known as thirty-nine twenty-four Booth Callaway, Richland Hills, Texas, seven six one one eight. Item C, approve interlocal agreement between the Education Service Center Region Ten and the city of Richland Hills and authorize city manager to sign the agreement. Now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I asked a question on item A of this.
We'll have to pull this from the agenda. We have to pull it from the agenda if you're going to talk about item A. You'll need to come forward too.
Yeah, we can.
We can pull it from the agenda. Okay, we need a motion to remove or move.
Okay, Mayor, I, I move that we accept the consent agenda, removing item A for later deliberation.
It's item, I think you meant item B, the replat.
He wants B, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Removing item B for later consideration.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
We want to talk about the replat then?
Okay, we'll go ahead and, and visit that item, so. Approve a replat for the property described as lots one R and two R, block A, J, and D, properties addition, otherwise known as thirty-nine twenty-four Booth Callaway, Richland Hills, Texas, seven six one one eight. We have one card for Doug Nolton. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Mayor, council? Doug Nolton, twenty-seven forty-nine Spruce Park Drive. I just got one question. You said something about, in the presentation a while ago, about the drainage off of Booth Callaway that goes through that property. Uh, who's going to be responsible for maintaining?
Well, that was my point, is they need to, not our people, but the owner, the new owner of the property, has to maintain that property.
Okay.
We've done it in the past because it was an emergency situation. We considered it because the road filled up with water, but we're going to expect them to do that.
Okay, so that will be in part of the.
Part of the development.
The development of this.
Yeah.
Is to, to make sure that they don't let it grow up and become a problem.
Absolutely. It has to be addressed.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. That's all, that's only quick.
JP? All right, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that, you know, obviously, if there is a development, they will be responsible for kind of maintaining the property, but even if there isn't a development, they are responsible for maintaining the property. So if it sits as is for the next five years, and our co-compliance is doing regular, you know, analysis investigations throughout the community, as long as that property is, you know, in decent shape, then they won't have any issues. The second that we start to see issues with it, they will be notified, they will be contacted, and they will be asked to maintain it as they're supposed to, as any other property is supposed to in the community. So, but there's a development, whether there isn't, ownership is responsible.
So is there a reason why we didn't enforce it before this owner?
So I don't know that, I, I can't speak to the co-compliant to the history there, but I would venture to guess that there, they were notified to maintain their property and they may not have maintained it until we then became responsible because they were not responsive in maintaining it.
That's correct.
Did we put a lien on them for every time we handled something that was their responsibility?
Yes, I do know that because I've processed those.
Okay, good.
With the assistance of Lindsay.
That's our remedy.
Thanks.
Five, five liens, okay. That's what we do.
So that goes along with the sale, so.
Oh yeah, and I'm guessing if, if they're serious about trying to market that property, they, for now, they are really going to try to keep it up, so. It would be financially beneficial for them to do so.
All right. Very good, thank you. All right.
Okay, Mayor, I move that we.
I need, just need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve of item B, approve replat of property described as lot one R and two R, block A, J, and D, properties addition, otherwise known as thirty-nine twenty-four Booth Callaway, Richland Hills, Texas.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, very good. Next item is Consider Resolution six twenty-eight twenty-five to participate in the fifty-second year Community Development Block Program. We'll have a public hearing and we have Director Dernovich and Kelly, and Kelly, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Kip Dernovich and Kelly Morris with the Public Works Department. Today covering item three A, again, the Consider, Consider Resolution six twenty-eight dash twenty-five to participate in the fifty-second year Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, along with a public hearing. The Department of Housing and Urban Development authorizes funds to entitle communities through the CDBG or the Community Development Block Grant. Since two thousand and thirteen, Tarrant County has divided the consortium cities into two groups to provide greater funding on projects of all cities in alternating years. In two thousand and twenty-six, Group B cities will be eligible for funding, which includes Richland Hills. For the fifty-second year CDBG program, staff is recommending replacement of the water main along the thirty-one hundred block of Fay Drive between Park Place Drive and Jameson Street. The project will consist of removing and replacing approximately three hundred and eighty linear feet of four-inch water main pipe with six-inch pipe and removing and replacing approximately, or sorry, as well as the roadway and two service connections and removing and replacement of the asphalt. Public work staff, of course, will work with the county to make Fay Drive from Park Place Drive to Alina, the county roadway project, in the next fiscal year. We are anticipating a total construction cost for the project of about a hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, and with a, uh, award ranging anywhere from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we should anticipate the higher amount, award amount, so we're looking at probably about twenty-eight hundred ninety-five dollars or three thousand approximately for this project. One of the things that I'm going to go back and forth a little bit on is each year that we are CDBG eligible, we follow a specific process in selecting the proposed project. Uh, mainly whenever there's a sewer or water main break in the area or in the prior or current years, we like to have discussions with the residents when we're out and about. Uh, we want to make sure that we are addressing any concerns. We also have discussions with our unit price contractors as well as staff, kind of get a good feel for projects and areas that might be eligible and making sure that we meet the proposed guidelines. Uh, if I go back to this particular, again, sorry, Councilmember Witt, it's pretty small, but you can see there are three, or there's four yellow highlighted cells. Uh, three of them show the areas that we are currently meeting the requirements for the CDBG project. So in the one zero one two dash zero one area one, which is on the very lowest portion of this particular map, it is bordered by the Handley-Edderville, the railroad, and then Midway Road and drops down a little bit down with, uh, the Austin Asphalt Company. Uh, that is an area that's eligible. Right above it, uh, which was one one three three point zero two dash zero three, so the largest portion down there that borders the Big Fossil Creek, uh, and then comes again down on the railway and then back up a little ways. And then in the very far upper right-hand corner, one one three four one zero dash, or the, the number three area, uh, that also is Callaway Creek along with Airline, Leslie, and Norma Drive. So the two things that we need to meet for the guidelines are the median income requirements, where it has to be fifty-one percent or more in those areas meet that guideline. But also, we need to work within the FEMA floodplain. And so in these two other areas with the Big Fossil Creek and Callaway Creek, we're very limited to some of the areas that fall within that floodplain. Uh, we're also more or less rapidly running out of, uh, streets that only provide water and sewer that are in need of repair or replacement. And so we're finding it a little bit more difficult, but, uh, as I mentioned, we'll do our best to follow the process each time, speak with the residents, ask staff, again, our contractors, uh, to make sure we're upfront about what we're doing. You know, let folks know we're not just picking something that, you know, we think is a, is a good friend of ours or something of that nature, but it just allows us to kind of be able to move forward and let folks know the reasons why. Uh, as I mentioned, there are also several types of projects that are valid for potential projects in the future. They don't have to include just water lines and sewer lines. You also have roadways, sidewalks, curb and gutter, facilities, and streetlights. You also have roadways, sidewalks, curb and gutter, facilities, and streetlights. Again, as I mentioned, the funding is limited to a hundred and sixty thousand dollar maximum this year, down from a hundred and eighty thousand dollars just due to the federal government lowering the amount of funds that are available. It works very well for us this year. We will have now two times in a row where basically the CDBG funding will cover the entirety of the project. And then, as we mentioned several months past, our goal is always to use the county project to do the roadway, so we kind of get a twofer, sometimes a threefer. Down the way, we may have to work a little bit more in coordination with the county and both the CDBG portion and the roadway portion, and we may need to add some dollars. So it might be a combination of a project where through the utility fund, we would do the sewer or the water, or vice versa, then the CDBG, and then the roadway through the county project. So lots of ways to come at it, but just wanted to make sure that you all kind of had a good understanding and anybody watching at home. There's also a possibility down in that lower area, if we go back again, one zero one two zero one. In that particular area, more of the industrial side. We, again, the border of Highway one-twenty-one, Handley-Edderville, Midway Road, and the Big Fossil, we can look at improving safety, security, and site within that particular industrial area. In the past, we've had many discussions with Encore. I know Scott is here with Encore. We've talked about different types of street lighting upgrades. That's just a reminder that that's something in the future we could take a look at there. We have a follow-up meeting with Scott on December fifteenth to kind of talk a little bit about the tariffs, some of those pricing. But just wanted to let you know that there, again, are lots of different ways to look at it and some things that we're pursuing in the future. With that, we'll gladly answer any questions. And then just again, we would have an action requested tonight, a motion to approve Resolution six twenty-eight dash twenty-five to participate in the fifty-second year Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program. Any questions that we can help you with this evening?
I have a question. Is there some sort of rule, recommendation, or general guidelines on how many streetlights per mile, per block, per something that we're supposed to have or should have?
There are some guidelines. I can't give you the specifics just right, but usually it's ever kind of so many feet. I want to say it's in the range of two hundred to six hundred, but I'll definitely double-check and get back with you after this evening.
I would bet we're not compliant with that.
Again, we've got some opportunities for improvement, and I know that you've mentioned that in the past. That's one of the reasons we wanted to let you know we're definitely taking a look at it.
Yeah.
A few months ago, a bunch of mayors were invited to come and meet the HUD Secretary, Scott Turner. So he's telling us in the meeting that the big beautiful bill slashed every bit of the CDBG funds, and they were gonna shut the whole department down in Tarrant County. Well, they put it back in. They've limited now, I see, to a hundred and sixty thousand. I didn't realize they had dropped it down, but at least it's still, we're getting something out of it. So I wish they would give it to communities that are more in need, give us the higher amounts compared to these other cities that have a lot of money. They still have some areas that have that lower economic value there, and they get them the same amount of money.
Right.
So anyway, it's unfortunate. It's not more
Better distributed.
Better distributed, yes.
So Kip, what would be our cost for this?
On this particular project, if it's as we anticipate, in the prior years, we really, we usually received the highest award, so that would be about a hundred and sixty thousand. With a hundred and sixty-two eight ninety-five proposed cost, we're looking a little, just under about three thousand dollars.
That's not bad.
That would come from the utility fund, and again, we have it to cover, so we think that's excellent, along with Mamosa Park being completely covered. We'll have done very well with the county's assistance, and appreciate Susan Al from the county for helping us out.
Alright. Kip, do I get the, we're gonna do this work, we're gonna temporarily patch the street, and then the next year, we'll go through and redo the street. Is that what we're gonna do?
Yes, sir. We would, we'd basically repair where we removed the pipe, and then from there, we'd come back in the next fiscal year, and the county project would be to do the milling overlay over the entire roadway.
Okay.
I want to say thank you for sending somebody, Bartlett Trees or something, that's cutting the trees away from the streetlights.
Oh, that's actually, I almost called him commissioner. I upgraded him. Director Valdez and our police chief and interim city manager, they've been a part of that, have done a great job.
That's wonderful. I mean, absolutely wonderful. I hope it makes it, the streets a lot lighter now because you don't have just that little circle.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright. I'm good.
I'd say let's sign it up for it.
It's a public hearing, so.
We need to open a public hearing.
This time, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come and speak about this? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Mayor, I motion to approve Resolution six twenty-eight twenty-five.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Next item is Consider Ordinance fifteen thirty-six, granting to Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC, its predecessors and assigns an electric power franchise to use the present and future streets, alleys, highways, public utility easements, public ways, and public property of the City of Richland Hills to construct, maintain, and operate electric power lines and facilities.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
City Manager.
So the city's current franchise agreement with Encore Electric Delivery is set to expire at the end of this month. The proposed ordinance renews the franchise effective January first, two thousand twenty-six, with an initial term that will end December thirty-first, two thousand forty-five. As written, the franchise will automatically renew for successive six-month periods following the expiration date unless canceled by either party. Cancellation does require written notice provided at least sixty days prior to the end of the renewal period. The city attorney has reviewed the proposed franchise agreement and incorporated several modifications to clarify the terms and strengthen protections for the city. Encore has agreed with nearly all the city attorney's modifications and collaborated with staff throughout the review process. Any of the revenues received from the franchise payments go to support the city's general operation funds. And with that, I can answer any questions. Our city attorney, in regards to the agreement, we also have our Encore representative, Scott Brombaugh, here as well.
I heard it took a while to get through that agreement. They were just kind of difficult? No, no.
Always, Scott is always very quick to respond and very helpful.
Yeah. So, so the base contract is a twenty-year contract with six months renewal period? Is that, is that, is that what it was before? Did we do twenty years with Encore before?
Yes, those franchise agreements are always long.
Okay. And six-month agree, six-month renewal?
I can't remember what the renewal term was in the initial franchise, but it was a long.
That seems short.
It does.
They're voting, waiting us to work together.
We're gonna change our mind in six months, or what?
I think it takes out, so what we've seen is some of these twenty-year franchises have come up is that councils are rushing to get their new franchise pushed through, and that provision allows for some auto renewals so that a new agreement can be put in place without it having to come back to council necessarily.
Okay.
So you're not rushing at the end of, you know, at the end of two thousand forty-five to get your new franchise done.
Right, right.
So it renews over six months, but what's the notification period again?
Sixty days.
Okay.
But nothing changed. I mean, it's just the same.
No, there were, there were a lot of, there were a lot of changes.
A three-month agreement, actually.
But, but mostly.
Those were redlined in the packet. I didn't outline them in the memo.
There's a notification if you plan on doing anything, you know, at the end of that six months, so it's really a three-month. So, it's almost like three months, three months. Scott, do you want to speak to this?
Not particularly.
You could have waved me off.
You're winning.
Mayor, council, I just want to say thank you for taking this next step to move forward with the renewal. Just, just to kind of recap, some of the older agreements were forty and fifty years, way back in the day, so they're kind of shortened a little bit now. I don't think most cities want to go that long anymore. That's why it's a twenty-year agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
That's still long.
It's still long.
Big picture, but I understand.
Right. Compared to where it was, it's half or less, but it is still, it's still quite a long period of time.
Okay.
Well, people can still be around twenty years, forty, fifty years, you're pushing it, so that makes sense why they shorten that.
Sure, yeah. And sometimes if there is a delay in getting it approved, we just continue to make our payments and we continue to operate just like it was signed until it's done.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Alright, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we accept the Encore franchise agreement.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Alright, next item will be Consider Contract Amendment to Sea Greenscaping for construction of the restroom pavilion structure at Kate Baker Park, Director Valdez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eric Valdez, Parks Direct Director or Commissioner. I have two presentations tonight, item five A and five B, both identical until we get to the awarding of the contract to Sea Greenscaping. So item five A, the Kate Baker Contract Amendment with Sea Greenscaping. In two thousand twenty-three, the budget was approved for funding for Kate Baker Park parking lot as well as the restaurant and pavilion structure. In two thousand twenty-three, we purchased that structure from Romtech, and that structure has been in place at the Public Works Yard since two thousand twenty-three. Uninstalled, it remains there. At the time, city council approved a budget of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and later on, we also added another thirty-two thousand dollars to that amount to cover any delays in the construction. Obviously, we've had some delays. The original Romtech contract was the amount of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. So in speaking with Romtech, they're very eager to get this project off their books, as are we in the Parks Direct Department. They gave us two options, really. The first option is to, well, before I go to the next slide, the number you want to remember is five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, which was the approved budget. The first option is to continue with Romtech. The first bullet point there, you can see there that we've already paid two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents for the manufacturing and delivery of that structure, of those structures, actually, both of them.
Okay, that is for both structures.
Correct, sir. In speaking with Romtech, they are including a six, almost a sixty-two thousand dollar penalty for construction delay. So in the third bullet there, you'll see an installation cost that's yet to be paid of the original contract, which is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-eight cents, plus nearly a sixty-two thousand dollar penalty for delay, which brings the unpaid amount to three hundred and twenty-four thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents. The total Romtech project would be, which is the paid version, the paid portion and the unpaid portion would be five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Again, that's the paid amount, the installation, and the delay. In the previous slide, it was five eighty-two. We would be over budget about seventy-three hundred dollars. Now, in speaking with them, one of the other options that they provided was we could seek an outside vendor to install that restroom for us. So if you recall, Kate Baker and Rosebud, those park renovations were awarded to Sea Greenscaping. So I reached out to Sea Greenscaping, and they provided the following. To install Kate Baker, they would do the entire project at a hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. For Rosebud, it's a hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents. So for a total installation for Green, Sea Greenscaping would be two hundred and ninety-one dollars, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents. Right? So again, that's the Sea Greenscaping option. So if we were going forward, yes, sir.
So, but that's not the parking construction in Rosebud. That's just the bathrooms and the parks.
That's just the restrooms, right. So.
But the five eighty-two includes the parking.
Yes, sir. We're gonna get to the park project here in a second.
Sorry, shut up.
The total project for Greenscaping would be, obviously, for the entire park, would be the two sixty-five that was already paid to Romtech. Romtech would assess us a five thousand, five hundred termination fee. That's for unpaid materials and then just an exit clause there. And then obviously, the Greenscaping installation for both Kate Baker and Rosebud. So that, again, that amount is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents. So the total project going the Sea Greenscaping route, which includes the Romtech portion plus the Sea Greenscaping installation, would be five hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. So remember the five eighty-two, this would be under budget, almost sixteen thousand dollars if we go this option.
Do you feel that, do you feel that Greenscaping is capable of installing that as well as Romtech?
So, so one of the things that Romtech did say was, while they won't project manage, they will provide assistance from afar. They won't be doing inspections, but anytime we need anything, they'll be on the phone. So.
Does that do anything, because if you have a third party doing it, does that do anything to warranties or?
I think, since these things were purchased so long ago, I think the warranties have already expired on these, on these units. And so for me personally, I would, I would prefer to go with Sea Greenscaping because they have, they are familiar with the park projects, whether it's Kate Baker, and they're doing the Rosebud Park. So it's one, one vendor taking on the entire project. That's, that's my.
Are we stretching Sea Greenscaping beyond their landscaping skills?
No, sir.
This is a construction project.
They're on board. They have subcontractors to do electrical work, plumbing, all that work. So again, the Sea Greenscaping Kate Baker contract amount, so this is the renovation project, was two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We would add the Romtech installation, the quote that they gave us, which is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, four forty-three. We put in a little contingency there for nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars, which brings the installation of, to the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, five eighty-seven. So the revised contract would end up being four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. And in the FY twenty-six budget, we allocate a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for improvements to the park, so it would cover the installation. So tonight, we're asking for a motion to approve the Contract Amendment with Sea Greenscaping LP for the construction of the park restroom pavilion structure at Kate Baker Park, increasing the contract amount by a hundred and forty thousand, five eighty-seven, which includes the installation cost of one twenty-one, four forty-three, plus the contingency for new contract price of four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight eighty-one.
Eric, is that the price for one bathroom?
That is the.
For?
This is broken in two different motions, which makes it confusing.
It is. It's two different motions. So you're gonna get the Sea Greenscaping, if you look at this slide right here. The Kate Baker project, the renovation, was two seventy-five. We want to add the installation of Romtech, which is the quote they gave us, plus a little contingency there to bring it up to a hundred and forty thousand, and then incorporate that a hundred and forty thousand into the contract total.
So you're telling me for one bathroom and pavilion, it has cost our city four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars?
No, no, that's, that's the entire project. That's the renovation plus the restrooms at a hundred and.
But at two locations.
That's.
But that's not the cost for two, that's for one location.
This is Kate Baker.
This is only Kate Baker, yes, sir. You're gonna see another presentation that's gonna be very identical with the numbers for Rosebud.
I think you go, because that's, you're, we're talking about amending, you know, the contract and the whole renovation, so what's, what's all in that for Kate Baker, not just the bathrooms, but?
So the Kate Baker project was the, the parking lot, striping that, sidewalks out there, and then, like I said, this park restroom was supposed to go in there from Romtech, but we, obviously, we couldn't afford it with the increased fees that they're gonna charge us. So that's why we, we've selected a alternative option.
What does the five thousand, five hundred dollar termination fee from Romtech do? Are they paying us, or we gotta pay them?
We gotta pay them to end the contract, and that's some materials that I've left that we haven't paid yet, plus to get out of the contract. Yes, ma'am. So we, and I go back to the.
So Eric, remind me, what were, was the council the reason for this delay in this whole project? Or what was the reason that this was delayed?
Well, before I, before I was here.
Clarify that.
Park, one park restroom that was supposed to go to Rosebud was supposed to be at Creek Trail. That never happened. It got moved over to Rosebud. We had, we've had some delays, one, getting the park project done at Kate Baker when I got here, and then, two.
And those were reasons?
I don't know.
So I can, I can chime in. So yes, there were a few issues. One, one was that we purchased these restrooms back early on when we were gonna put them at Kate Baker and Creek Trail Park. And then we moved forward with Kate Baker, but we went through a long discussion about Creek Trail Park. What hadn't been done at that park was a proper survey when we adopted the master plan. And so when they started to find a location for the restroom, you couldn't put it anywhere without building a five-foot retaining wall. And so staff and council decided that was unacceptable. We're not, we're gonna forego putting in a park restroom right now. Plus, this park needs to be looked at again in terms of the entire Glenview Corridor project. So then council decided to move it to Rosebud. And so with the delay, what we had initially talked to Romtech about was coming. And so, with the delay, what we had initially talked to Romtech about was, um, coming forward and building both restrooms at the same time. Because Creek Trail and Kate Baker, they're gonna go in at the same time. Well, then we split it. And so, that's where kind of an initial penalty came, is that we were no longer gonna move forward with Creek Trail. It was gonna be Rosebud and so we authorized that. And so, it's just been for delays in the project that they've said that we're gonna have to incur these additional penalties. Um, it has been my recommendation, because I, I have, I disagree with that, um, the additional penalties, because they can't tie it to any increased labor costs or anything. And we've had the materials for a year, over a year now.
We as in.
We as in the city.
Hills is in possession of.
Yes, we have had the materials on property for a long time now. And so, we just found it very difficult to continue to work with Romtech and decided, let's see what see greenscaping can do. I mean, they are a well-respected firm. They did all of the improvements at the Animal Services Center. They've done Kate Baker. They can do Rosebud. So, they absolutely have the capability and expertise to build a modular restroom pavilion facility.
Okay, so, so what it sounds like happened is at first, we were trying to get two parks done at once for, you know.
Correct.
mobilizing the whole thing. And then, so instead of splitting them early and they could have got started on Kate Baker right away, we didn't do that and we, and that caused schedule delays and we waited a long time to split them. And so, Kate Baker's delay just because it was tied to the other quagmire we were in.
So, on top of that, I would say that, uh, working in Bedford, see greenscaping did our renovation at the Voyage Ranch Park. A park restroom was part of that project.
Okay.
So, it wasn't ever a standalone project. Having to do it all over again, that's what I would do.
Okay.
It would be a park restroom as part of the project.
I think we just didn't have any background on their ability to do construction work like that. They.
Correct.
I, I'm think, I think of them as landscaping generally.
Now, I will say this, on top of that, uh, the park restroom that we have on a, on a, in the Spoleys yard is, it's not a complete structure. It has to be built.
Right.
The one at, at, uh, Voyage Ranch in Bedford, when we purchased that crane, drop it down, plumb it and we're done.
Right.
And so, yeah. So, they have done a park restroom before. I've seen it, you know, uh, I think this is probably the easier route, this probably, probably the route that we could afford, to be honest with you.
Now, I appreciate you finding a way to afford this without asking for more money.
Take that back.
One more slide?
There you go. I'm just writing something down.
Yep.
So, really what it comes down to is $174,000 for installation at one park, $121,000 at the other park. The purchase of the two bathrooms was 265, so it makes a total of $560,000 for two bathrooms installed.
566 of see greenscaping.
Yeah, 566, 132.
Correct.
There you go. I mean, that's, that's.
Or the other option is the Rom, uh, Romtech, you continue on. It's 589.
But are the contingencies in that number?
Yes, the, the.
Okay. So, it may well, it could potentially come in below that.
It could be.
But parking on Rosebud is outside of that.
Correct.
Right.
This is only for bathrooms.
That is, you said Rosebud, that's in the next presentation. You'll see the Rosebud.
Okay.
Project amount.
But there was a separate budget for that parking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, so.
It was 293.
And we're, we're adding to that budget.
It was 293, correct.
Okay, so you're not gonna come back for more money on the parking?
So, don't, don't be too surprised.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
So, what I will say is, maybe on the, not on the parking, but one, one of the things that, uh, I don't know if it concerns me, but those, the park restrooms are on pallets. I was not here when those arrived. And so, it's getting those pallets to Kate Baker, like, let's say they start Kate Baker for, to Kate, uh, Kate Baker, have them unravel those pallets, one to make sure we have all the parts, make sure we, we're good, and then take what's not part of Kate Baker over to Rosebud. That's why I think, uh, working with see greenscaping to do all that as part of their project makes more sense.
Yep.
Then to coordinate from, you know, Park Hill to see greenscaping to Romtech and when are they gonna be out here and give us notice? We'll just, uh, if this gets approved tonight, I'll get on the phone call with, uh, see greenscaping, get a timeline for the spring, early January to get this thing.
I was just about to ask you what the timeline was, because I'm, I'm, I'm ready for these.
I'm ready to.
Uh, yeah, and I know.
That is, it's gonna be challenging. I will tell you that. It'll be challenging to, uh, get it in, maintain those. We've gotta come up with some processes to make sure that we upkeep those restrooms and they're locked and they're secure and, yeah, so we're gonna. It'll, it'll be, uh, a great addition to those, those parks.
We're, we're not using Park Hill for anything else, are we?
They are overseeing the, uh, Rosebud Park project, correct? So, that amendment, you'll see the contracts for Kate Baker and Rosebud. We ran it through Park Hill to get that contract updated.
So, you'll tell us how much that is?
Yes.
Yes, sir. It'll, it's in the, uh, we have a draft contract.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure. So, are you, all the parking is squared away or is there gonna?
He hadn't talked about that yet.
Yeah.
We're, we're, that's in the next slide.
That's in the next, that's in the next presentation, but that park project is, uh, 293. And we've already awarded that to see greenscaping. What they didn't want to do was start Rosebud without having tied up Kate Baker.
Sure.
So, now that we, I can't move in one direction or the other. Now, if I go this route, I can appease them. I say, hey, you're it. Finish up Kate Baker, let's get started on Rosebud and let's move.
So, what is the actual cost then for Kate Baker? I mean, because I'm getting all kinds of numbers up here.
For the restrooms itself or the entire project?
What we've entirely project, the total cost for Kate Baker that we have spent and we're needing to spend.
So, on this slide here, you're gonna see the original greenscape contract at 275. That was for the renovation. Pretty much done. We want to add another $140,000, which is the installation plus contingency, to increase that contract to $415,881. That would be the entire project.
For just Kate Baker?
For just Kate Baker.
And you, but you have to add about 252, uh, 260, yeah. 262, 120, 88 needs to be added to that to come up with the project with the bathroom. Because we paid for the, the, the materials that we paid for aren't in that number.
That's, that's the Romtech portion that we paid for the contract.
Right, right. We paid that in.
So, total, yeah, total, uh, it's a 265 divided by the two restrooms and that's what your restroom actually costs for manufacturing and delivery, yes.
Call it 131.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
So, now we're looking at 500, almost 550,000 just for one bathroom pavilion at Kate Baker?
No, that's.
That's already accounted for.
Both bathrooms.
Well, that says 415.
She's at one, that's all the work that we've done to improve the lot.
Right.
Get all the drives in, get all the sewer work done.
Mm-hmm.
And then you add that 131 plus this construction cost and that's the cost of the entire project.
Right.
That's what I'm asking for, is the total cost of the entire project.
But the, the project is more than just the bathroom.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's why this all got started for Kate Baker is because we wanted to put a bathroom pavilion.
I totally understand.
So.
Yes.
I, I just wanna know how much has this bathroom pavilion cost the city of Richland Hills and the residents for a bathroom?
So, there's the manufacturing delivery, which is a 265, so you could split it in half. Uh, and we haven't even done anything. So, again, if we go with the Romtech, you're gonna have to add a $62,000 right off the bat just to get it done. And so.
Dang. Yeah, that gives me heartburn.
Infrastructure's not inexpensive.
By adding in some of the other park costs, it kinda confused it a little bit.
Right.
Should've just stuck straight with the bathrooms only.
Okay.
So, I'm just, because that made it.
Any other slide you would like to review?
So, that's the total cost for?
Both parks.
Both parks.
Yes.
And that's just the bathroom, not anything we've already done?
Correct.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
That's it.
Okay.
It says Kate Baker contract amendment, but it's really both.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and assuming we pass this, uh, or both of them at least, uh, uh, just as, as soon as you get a timeline, and timelines can change, I get that.
Absolutely.
But, uh, just, uh, I don't know if we have to just let city management know, so they can send out an email or, you know, in the next, in your next, uh, department report or whatever, it needs to be presented.
Yes, sir.
You'll definitely. Okay.
Mayor, I really would like to say I'm having a hard time with saying yes on this because we have spent so much hours going through this. We've spent lots of money already on this. And still, uh, two years later, we're still not seeing that being done.
We are now, though.
But we're fixing to.
Right.
But again, that's what we were told last year when we voted, that we were, it was gonna happen. And again, I'm still, I'm having a real hard time wanting to say yes on this vote for this because it just seems excessive.
So, do you think we should not have bathrooms in the park?
You know, I'm gonna tell you, when I moved here, we had bathrooms in the park and I would, I would walk my child two miles to take her back home to go to bathroom, let, not let her go to that bathroom. And I understand we have a whole different parks and recreation people now and that they have a cleaning crew and everything, but I was just telling Eric, I went to, uh, Rosebud this weekend and there's tree limbs broken, uh, that have been dead for a while and there's a chair sitting out there in the middle.
I have nothing to do with bathrooms in the park.
But I'm just saying.
Most of our residents want bathrooms.
Right, but it's the maintenance.
Just because you don't, most of our residents.
Oh, no, I think, I think we all want them. I think that the challenge is.
She doesn't want them.
Right.
She just said she didn't want them.
I think it's a waste of money, to be honest, for the city, but that's just me personally.
Families get to spend all day out there instead of having to leave and take their kid back home to go to the bathroom.
Right.
They don't have to leave. That's part of quality of life. That's what we want to provide for our citizens. I mean, I feel very strong about that. And if you make them have to leave, then it's just like, well, it's just another stupid park. We gotta go home. Alright, kids, pack up, you know?
And you don't go back.
I just, I think it's, it's important for us to be able to let people spend all day out there if they want to. Have a family gathering or whatever, you know, or just go out there with their kids for three or four hours. And the city, it's all, it's on Eric. He knows that. He has to take care of these bathrooms to make sure that they're clean. We have already authorized these things in the past. Now, it's just a matter of paying a lesser amount to get the bathrooms installed. And I think these prices are reasonable now since COVID. Before COVID, that Creek Trail bathroom was gonna be cheap. But once COVID hit, everything went through the roof.
Yeah.
We just paid a fortune for this stuff. And it's unfortunate that Park Hill actually told us to put a bathroom in that park. That's their fault. That's on them. We shouldn't have even been dealing with that in the first place. We could've gone on and got the other park done faster, but that caused a delay because of Park Hill, so.
I think, uh, the execution of the park restroom was probably what is, is, uh, I guess, uh, leading the discussion in a certain direction. I, I, I totally get it, get it. I, I would not want to do the park like this again, for sure. Uh, having visited Holtsom City, their brand new park, they've got a park restroom. It's a modular one. They did not build it part of their project. And so, the execution, you're correct. It should've been a lot better, but we're here today. We need to make a decision. Uh, there's two options. The third option is correct. If you go back to the original slide, that 265 that you've already paid, that could be done with the project. And it's done. But you don't get a park restroom in your, in your park.
No, at all. And we just have modular parks just sitting there forever. And we pay 265.
We'll get our money back.
I can't tell the citizens, I'm just gonna throw that away. I'm sorry.
That, that's my problem with it.
Yeah, we've already, that's sunk cost.
But what we're telling them now is we've already spent $265,000 and it's two years and we still don't have it up.
But, but if we act, we'll get it up.
For the first, first quarter of, uh, 2026.
Yeah, we're at a point now that, I mean, it's, it's, it has to be done.
I agree with you.
I don't, Teresa, I'm having a hard time understanding why you would vote no, because you have to have an alternative. What is the alternative?
I just see a waste of money.
What is the alternative?
The alternative?
Don't build bathrooms?
Well, we even, I even suggested whenever I was on the Development Corporation, why can't we just use these porta pots that they come out with, those big fancy ones that you see at some of these, well, okay, Lindsay knows what I'm talking about. At some of the bathrooms at some of the races and stuff, they're like fancy dancing. And then you got the little ba, the hand.
They cost a bazillion dollars a week, too.
They do. They're expensive.
So, I, I, I'm trying to understand because if you vote no without an alternative, you're saying no bathrooms in the parks. And that's not what our citizens want.
Okay.
I know you may not want them.
Right.
But our residents want them.
Okay.
And we've already spent $265,000. That's, that's money out the door a year ago or whenever.
Three years ago.
Three years ago. It's gone. So, we can either throw that in the trash or we spend more money and get the bathrooms that our residents want. That's, that's the decision we're here to make right now.
What it comes down to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was about to say that. Honestly, I think the discussion shouldn't be, should we have bathrooms or in the, in parks or not? I think that, that discussion's happened. Uh, I mean, one reason I'm frustrated this has taken so long. This was initially started, uh, I mean, very, very, very initially, and this is not on Eric. Eric, Eric wasn't here at the time, but this was very initially started even before I got on council in 2022. So, uh, the, the option is in front of us. Uh, do we want to go with this one company or do we want to go with the other one where we could, uh, be, looks like we'll be, we're gonna be under budget? That's, that's the options. Uh, I think, you know, uh, and some of us weren't even here on, you know, when, when this was all started and all that. But unfortunately, I think that discussion's already happened. The, the only discussion we have here is which company do we want to go with? Do we want to go with what our parks director is suggesting or do we want to go with the company that, uh, um, well, Candace kinda said it, aren't, aren't doing us right, so.
You know, out of good conscience, this is probably, I'm gonna go against exactly how I walked in here with the attitude. And thank y'all very much for giving me the opportunity to express my feelings about that. And thank you for sharing y'all's opinions and thoughts and stuff. I do appreciate that because I believe that this is probably what God wants me to do is to approve this. So, thank y'all very much for your patience and time with me.
Thank you, Teresa. And I appreciate the feedback. We're gonna be the ones managing that and we know the expectation of the.
You bet.
Uh, not only for the park restrooms, but future park projects.
Yep.
Eric, in the future, we, we all, I'll speak for all of us, we would really appreciate you helping us be smarter about how to avoid these kinda situations. And if we need to be in more à la Karts way of doing things, even though it might cost a little bit more money, time is expensive to us as council members, right? We are, we are, we are getting hammered by what does it take three years to put bathrooms in a park, right?
Yeah.
We don't have a good answer for that. So, so any help you can do would help us in the future as we want that.
Absolutely. We're here to help.
Yeah, from time value and money, this was expensive.
Alright, well.
Alright.
Time to entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the contract to amend see green.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got somebody that wants to talk.
You haven't closed it, okay.
Please state your name and address.
Yeah, Doug Nolton, 2749 Spruce Park Drive.
Okay.
I'm gonna agree with you a lot and I'm gonna agree with you a lot, but I have seen restrooms in Rosebud Park. A great-looking facility down there that this city let go to pot over time and it was torn out. Now, I'd like to go back and look at the cost of what it took, took to put that one in as of what it's costing you today to put this one in. This project seems like it's just been with money. That's what the whole thing has seemed like. I've already known this thing to start with and I'll, and I'm still in that position of no because I know where it's gonna go over time. We're not always gonna have Eric down there to, to keep it clean. And somebody other, some other city manager's gonna come in and the city council's gonna say, no, let's cut that out of the budget. We don't need that. And then here we go. We spent a million dollars for nothing. That's my concern now.
It's not a million dollars, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But it's not a million dollars, so. And I think we are much more progressive in this city than we used to be in the past when you used to see the deterioration of our structures and buildings. We saw what the old fire station used to look like. That crappy place that we tore down to build a new place. So, we take care of stuff now. We're taking care of the animal shelter. We're taking care of city hall. We improved this area in here. We put a new floor in the gym because we want to take care of what we're doing with the city and we are doing it. We're doing it a lot better now. It's not like the old days and it better not go back to the old days. I don't think it ever will.
You're one council. That's all I'm saying.
You bet. You bet. We are. We're one council. We're progressive, though. We're moving forward, so. Alright, we have a motion on the floor?
We don't have, we, we have, we, we should probably.
We don't need to do anything else.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the contract to amend the see green scaping LP for construction of the restroom pavilion structure at Kate Baker Park, increasing the contract amount by $140,587, which includes the $121,443 cost plus the contingency for a total new contract amount of $415,881.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Alright. Alright, the next item will be.
The, the, Rosebud Park.
Same thing, Rosebud Park.
Same exact presentation, again.
You don't want me to read it, John? That's fine.
Oh, just go, you got it, motion.
No, 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 I.
See greenscaping.
Alright.
Construction of the restroom pavilion structure at Rose. Construction of the restroom pavilion structure at Rosebud Park. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, item 5B, which is the Seagreen Scaping Rosebud Park Contract Amendment. Uh, same slide as before. 582 is the overall budget for, for this, uh, the park restrooms that were approved. Uh, Romtech's contract was 527, 382.32. Uh, this is all the exact information. Your Rose, uh, your Romtech option obviously has the $62,000 worth of delays baked in there. And so your total Romtech project cost would be 589, 358.16. Again, that's the paid amount installation delay. We reached out again to Seagreen Scaping. Before you see the Rosebud installation, uh, cost at 173,928.20, which is the total con, uh, installation cost for, from Seagreen Scaping is 295,371 dollars and 20 cents. Again, if, if we go with the Romtech or the Seagreen Scaping, it's the Romtech price that we've already paid, the termination fee plus the Seagreen Scaping installation cost for both Kate Baker and Rosebud, 556, 132.64. So we are hoping to amend the Seagreen Scaping Rosebud Park contract. The renovation for that park was two, is 293,599. We would like to add the Romtech installation to that overall cost at 173,928.20. That's just the Rosebud amount for a revised contract total of 467,527 dollars and 20 cents. Fiscally year 26, we included 472,753 for park improvements in that budget. So tonight, we're asking for a motion to approve contract amendment with Seagreen Scaping LP for construction of the park restroom and pavilion structure at Rosebud Park, increasing the contract amount by 173,928 dollars and 20 cents for a new contract total at 467,527.20. With that, any questions?
I do have one more question for you and then I'll stop with the questions.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
On Rosebud, since they haven't done anything like they've done at Kate Baker, do we have a timeline on how, when they're gonna get started on Rosebud and when they're gonna finish Rosebud?
So that would be my first call tomorrow is, okay, you approve both of these tonight. What are we gonna do, Seagreen Scaping? Are we gonna mobilize at the same time? Are we gonna do park restrooms first? Are we gonna do the renovation at Rosebud and then put it in? My, my hope is that we, and I'm gonna try to get them to do Kate Baker and let's wrap that up and let's focus all our energy, uh, at Rosebud. That's my hope.
Okay. Anything further?
Q226 for Rosebud.
I would hope, yeah. So we're doing the same install of the same physical building, but we have a difference in cost.
It's a little different. It's not the exact same building. It's a little, it's a little different. It has a roll-up garage. Uh, they've got all the, uh, plans from Romtech and that's how they came.
So it's, it's a different.
Yes, sir.
Had it in my head they were the same facilities. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anybody else?
Mayor, I move for approval.
Okay. Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, next item will be, consider renewal of master services agreement for professional engineering services with Half Associates Incorporated. We have our city manager.
Yes, Mayor Council, I am going to present the next few items regarding Half's master service agreement. Um, the city of Richland Hills has utilized Half for our professional engineering services since January of 2016. Staff has been consistently pleased with Half's responsiveness, technical expertise, and quality of work. Staff recommends renewing the master services agreement with Half to maintain consistency in engineering services and valuable institutional knowledge. The updated MSA includes a five-year term with automatic annual renewals unless either party provides written notice at least 30 days prior to the expiration of the then current term. The automatic renewals will ensure continuity of service while allowing the city flexibility to reassess engineering needs each year. The MSA does not preclude the city from soliciting proposals from other engineering firms for specific projects. The city retains full discretion to issue requests for qualifications, request for proposals, or to contract with other firms when it is in the city's best interest. Following approval of the MSA, the city council will also consider task order 001, Engineering Services as City Engineer, and task order 002, Engineering Services as Flood Plane Administrator. The city of Richland Hills spends approximately $150,000 annually on general engineering services provided by Half Associates. Funding for these services is allocated within the appropriate funds during the annual budget process. Task orders issued under this MSA are individually authorized and build on a project-specific or hourly basis, depending on the defined scope of services. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the master services agreement. Um, we also have our city engineer, David Burkett, here representing Half, who can answer any questions as well, and our director of public works, Kip Dernovich.
So can you go back, uh, when you were, uh, there you go, right there. So that's a five-year term with automatic re, and, see. A five-year term with automatic annual renewal. So it automatically, after the five-year term, it only rolls for one year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And at any point, we could bring back an agreement and amend it for another longer term if council is pleased and the city is pleased with the services provided.
Do they give, does, and I don't know how Half operates, but the, for, do you get better rates with them for services? If you, if you, uh, go longer than five years?
No.
Or is that the, is that the top?
Uh, their, their rates will be billed per task order, so it's not tied to this agreement. It's tied to the task orders. And so the task orders are issued for each individual project. And so those rates will change over time.
Okay, what do those, what do those just become? Uh, uh, amendments to the master services agreement or schedules to the master services agreement or?
The schedules will be tied to the task order.
Okay.
And so task orders below 50,000 will be approved by the city manager. Um, anything above 50,000 will come to city council. And so those rates will be tied to those task orders.
Gotcha.
Well, I gotta say, uh, Half has really been, uh, a, a good partner for us, I think. You know, I, I, in different times, uh, they, they've communicated even directly with citizens during different things. Uh, I won't go into detail, but there was one time when FEMA didn't do the floodplain right, quite right, and, and Half had to get involved. I've seen David Burkett himself literally out there, you know, looking at projects. Uh, so I, I think Half's been really good for us.
I can second that. I've had recent interaction with them and they've, they've shocked me with the responsiveness. So. A quick question.
Mm-hmm.
The task order one, task order two are basically separated for accounting purposes? Is the reason we got two different task orders?
It's basically so that we're officially designating a city engineer and officially designating a floodplain administrator.
Okay.
I do have a question for David. If you would like to come forward, please. So here recently, I was talking to Candace and Kim about the inspection services on the projects that we have going on now. So we had Mimosa Park where we did the water line. And we've got also this group of streets that we're doing right now. And I asked about billable hours for inspection time. Can you get that information to me? Cause I'd like to find out how many hours we've had your inspection staff out there.
Sure, yeah, I can get that information for you.
Cause it's important that, you know, it's not just city staff or the contractor calling you. It's you all being proactive with us as well, too. And sometimes we need your help to say, hey, I think we need to be out there. Your contractor's working and you're turning in all these, these bills, you know? And you review bills too, I would think, don't you?
Right.
Yeah, so you're seeing work going on. And if you're not seeing inspection, I think you need to bring it to somebody's attention and just say, we need more time. Now, they may have already been out there a lot. I don't know. But every time I've driven by there, I've never seen a half vehicle out there. I've seen city trucks out there, but you all are the experts to inspect streets. And maybe you all could teach our guys, too, about some of the ins and outs of what they're inspecting out there as well, too. So maybe make us more valuable to our own selves.
Definitely. And I think our guys try to work with Kelly. I think Kelly works with, with our inspectors who are out there in the field uh, on a somewhat regular basis to go through some of the things that they're seeing as, as we're working on the streets and, you know, using Kelly's experience as well on the water and sewer side.
Yeah. Well, y'all do a great job. I'm not saying that at all. I just, you know how I feel about inspection. If you don't get it inspected, it's gonna fall apart. We don't like paying for stuff twice, you know? So, anyway. If you'll just find out what that number is, you can get it to the city manager and they can forward it to you. That's fine.
Okay.
You can just send it to me. I'd appreciate it.
David, what is typically the turnaround on getting the, the documentation for a street repair? Like, we have one of our streets that we have to have repaired. How long does it take you to do your part and get it back to them, the city, so they can get on, I mean, get Atmos and all them involved on their part? How long does it typically take you?
Uh, yeah, it really depends on the project itself, the, the, the size and the scope of what it is.
Okay.
Uh, highly depends, I mean, on the six streets projects that we're working on right now. I mean, that's a, a rather large project, required quite a bit of lead time on, on both the, the engineering side and then the utility side to get their, their stuff completed. Uh, so I, I can't really give you a specific date because it really just hinges on what the project actually is.
Cause you do, um, you do the engineering part first and then they submit it to Atmos and they do their part and give it back to you?
So we.
Before we even get started on the street?
What we try to do is we get to a certain point in our design and then we hand it over to Atmos and say, hey, we're, you know, we, what we call plans adequate, which is a, you know, a term in our business that we have enough information for you as a utility company to be able to relocate your, know where, what needs to be relocated of your facility. So like, basically that's a, like a roadway plan and profile sheets and then you have your underground utilities, like where we're gonna put the water line, the sewer line, and any storm drain if we have any.
Right.
And so they use that information then that they can take that forward. But there's that, there's a period of time in which, you know, your design is kind of critical path. And then once you get to that plans adequate, 60% complete of the design roughly, uh, it shifts over to the utility and say, hey, all right, you guys have what you need to be able to go relocate. Now go do your part. And then it comes back to the city to, you know, move forward with the contractor and have them produce the project.
We did have delays this year, though, I believe, for the gas lines. So.
Yep.
That just, it holds everybody up and I don't want to see contractors raise their prices and say, hey, you delayed me and you're gonna pay a claim for it. So.
Yep. And, and one of the ways that we mitigate that risk is that, you know, we will, we've offered to do, sue the subsurface utility engineering as part of the early design so that we know exactly where those utilities are located.
But Atmos will do that for free.
Atmos will do those. Um, the only, the only catch on that end is that they won't do that until you start, give them their, the design. So they want to have that information in hand and then they will begin their process. So it extends their, their part of the timeline a little bit. But you're absolutely right. Atmos will, will cover that in.
Right. Yeah.
Cause it always seems like it takes about a year from the time we say, okay, let's start this street before you even see any kind of movement. So I was just kind of curious if that was about average?
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, that's about, about right. Uh, unfortunately, the construction.
Well, let me ask you this. What's the, uh, what's the, when a citizen asks me why it takes so long for you guys to, you know, do that? What's a good non-technical way I can say why? I'll put you on the spot, I know.
I, I mean, it just requires a, a, a good, a, a good amount of planning and engineering to make sure that we're, we're delivering the right product for, for the citizens. Cause in reality, that's what it is, is we have to make sure that what we're doing is the right plan. We don't want to just rush through on the front end and not have, have checked everything out of what needs to be. I mean, that's the purpose of why the city has hired Half in the past to, to help out with these kinds, types of tasks, to make sure that we're getting it done right. So you spend the time upfront to get it right and then you don't have as many problems on the back end when it's in construction.
And that's basically what I say, but I, I like, I wanted to hear you say it.
And they have to coordinate with utilities that are, that don't just work in Richland Hills. I mean, they work all over the place, so.
Right.
It's not, it's not an exact science coordinating with those utilities to.
Half's tagline is, we don't halfway do it, so. All right, very good.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. Entertain a motion on that one?
Yes. Mayor, I motion to renew the master services agreement with Half Engineering, uh, Half and Associates.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next order, item is consider task order 001 for engineering assistance as city engineer pursuant to master services agreement for professional services between city of Richland Hills and Half Associates Incorporated. Our city manager again.
Yes, Mayor Council, task order 001 is issued under the recently approved city's master services agreement. And it authorized Half Associates to continue providing professional engineering services as the designated city engineer. David Burkett, Vice President and Director of Transportation for Half, has served as the designated city engineer since January 2016. And staff has been consistently pleased with Mr. Burkett's responsiveness, technical expertise, and his familiarity with the city's infrastructure and development processes. Under this task order, Half will provide as-needed engineering services that support day-to-day municipal engineering functions, included but not limited to surveying and mapping, review of engineering documents and development submittals, construction observation support, general engineering consultation, engineering support for grants, review of permits requiring engineering input and attendance at city council meetings as needed. Task order 001 will be billed on a time and materials basis using Half's approved rate schedule. Engineering services performed under this task order are funded through the appropriate operating or capital improvement accounts during the annual budget process. The city of Richland Hills spends approximately 150,000 annually on general engineering services provided by Half Associates. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Council may have.
Happy to have you as our city engineer, David.
Yeah. Like I said, I've seen you out there. Could I, could I just say thank you? I, I've always appreciated working with Richland Hills staff and it's been a pleasure to serve as the city engineer for the past nine years, uh, believe it or not. So, uh, really appreciated getting to know everybody at the staff level and council as well. And, uh, you know, appreciate your, your vote of confidence in, in my work and, and Half in general. So thank you.
Thanks, David.
And, and I would like to say that I think it is a testament to our community and our staff that David, as he has, you know, excelled in his career at Half to Vice President, Director of Transportation, that he still really wants to be our city engineer. He enjoys it. He finds that it kind of hits those parts of his, you know, engineering expertise that he doesn't always get to exercise. He likes the challenge, so I think we're very blessed to have him.
That's right. You haven't handed this off yet, have you? Thanks.
He hasn't.
Thank you.
All engineers want to stay in grades doing engineering.
Gotta keep yourself sharp.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve task order 001 for engineering services as city engineer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consider task order 002 for engineering assistance as floodplain administrator pursuant to master services agreement for professional services between city of Richland Hills and Half Associates Incorporated.
Task order 002 is also issued under the city's master services agreement and authorizes Half to continue providing professional engineering services as our floodplain administrator. They have assisted the city with floodplain review and regulatory compliance since 2016. And we have been very pleased with the reliability and technical accuracy of the services provided. Under this task order, Half will provide floodplain management services on an as-needed basis, including responding to floodplain inquiries from staff, residents, and developers, reviewing elevation certificates and assisting with letters of map amendment, reviewing letters of map revision submitted to the city, providing technical review of hydrologic and hydraulic studies, and maintaining monthly floodplain assistance logs. Task order 002 will also be billed on a time and materials basis using Half's approved rate schedule. Engineering services performed under this task order are funded through the appropriate operating or capital improvement accounts. And the city spends approximately $10,000 annually on floodplain administration task orders. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
No questions.
We've, we get a, a monthly quarterly report of the floodplain inquiries?
We keep a, we keep a, a log, a rolling log. So, I mean, we can provide you a report if, if you would like a report of, you know, who, who all. We keep a log, a rolling log. So, I mean, we can provide you a report if you would like a report of, you know, who all has reached out.
That would be interesting.
We have a rolling log of all the people who call with inquiries. And actually, that's part of a requirement that's required as part of the MS four that Richland Hills is part of. And Angela Davidson with Half, she's been acting as the floodplain administrator for Richland Hills and she works with me in our fourth office. And she's my go-to when it comes to any of the permitting side of things. So, she helps out greatly from that standpoint.
I think, I'd like to take a look at what we, what the interactions have been for the last year.
Okay, yeah, we can-
Thank you, sir.
Get that for you.
Thank you.
Want a motion?
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve task order zero zero two for engineering assistance as floodplain administrator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consider task order zero zero three for engineering and design services for the Cheney Hills Safe Routes to School Sidewalk Project pursuant to master services agreement for professional services between City of Richland Hills and Half Associates Incorporated.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is our last task order this evening. And as you know, Richland Hills was awarded a federal grant through the North Central Texas Council of Governments to construct new sidewalk connections and pedestrian safety improvements serving the Cheney Hills Elementary School. The total estimated construction cost for the project is five point nine eight million dollars. The Safe Routes to School Grant provides funding under an eighty-twenty match with federal funds covering eighty percent of the eligible construction costs and the city is responsible for the remaining twenty percent match as well as all design, engineering, environmental and survey services associated with the project. This slide shows the proposed sidewalk connections. The new sidewalk segments are designed to tie into existing sidewalks, creating continuous pedestrian routes to the school. This may not be immediately apparent on the map as some connections begin and end where the sidewalks already exist. So, the red lines that you're seeing are those kind of gap areas where we are proposing to build the sidewalk connections. Under task order zero zero three, Half Associates will provide comprehensive design and engineering services required for the Safe Routes to School project, including surveying and mapping, subservice utility engineering, environmental documentation and permitting, design of sidewalks, ramps, driveways and pedestrian improvements, coordination with TechStop for federally funded project delivery, preparation of plans, specifications and estimates, TDLR coordination and permitting and floodplain permitting and drainage analysis. These services will be billed on a time and materials basis with a not-to-exceed fee of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Funding for the Cheney Hills Safe Routes to School project is included in the FY twenty twenty-six Oil and Gas Fund, which allocates six hundred thousand for design and engineering services. The city's required twenty percent construction match is anticipated to be funded through the Strategic Initiative Fund, which currently includes a two million dollar placeholder for future construction. Construction funding will officially be allocated through an advanced funding agreement with TechStop that will come to city council for approval at a later date. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and David Burkett can answer some of the engineering design questions as well.
So, why is they putting, wanting to put a sidewalk in the twenty-six-hundred block of Spruce Park, that little piece? I mean, because there's not another sidewalk until you get up towards the corner of Park Place over by the water tower. That's where the sidewalk ends up there. So, we're putting a little sidewalk down in the twenty-six-hundred block? Is that how I see that?
I mean, all of the side, all of the red areas are filling a gap. So, they're connecting with an existing sidewalk. And so, it may be that the map looks a little off, but-
Yeah, because I was gonna say, they're-
As we've proven and identified the locations, they are all connecting to an existing sidewalk.
Because there's not sidewalks down Mimosa to Rosebud and there's sidewalks on Pine Park, but there's no sidewalks from the twenty-seven, in the twenty-seven-hundred park to take it to Pine Park. So, that one little piece just kind of threw me off. I'm like, can we look into that a little bit further on that one? Because that makes no sense to me.
Sure, we can look at it.
We'll look at- Yeah, I'm sure you know better than I do as far as exactly where all the sidewalks were, but-
I thought twenty-seven-hundred block was included because, yeah, if it's not, she's right. So, yeah.
So, this, okay, so this is only for this Cheney Hills Elementary School, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are there plans to continue this in other parts of the city as well? Because as JP was talking, he made a comment about some landscaping services happening at Richland Crossing. And I noticed that at Richland Crossing, they came back and built some sidewalk. And I think what they did was they just built that sidewalk for the remainder of their flat development. And that sidewalk stops and then it's just dirt and then the sidewalk picks up at Bridges. And so, for Safe Routes to School, for all the new residents in Richland Crossing, they have no sidewalk. It just stops. So, I didn't know if that's under some other plan or if that-
It would be through like a future initiative, like a future project.
Okay.
So, Teresa-
How many feet is that?
That little section is on Scruggs Drive and there is a sidewalk between the, between Magnolia-
That's on Scruggs. Okay, thank you.
Hundred feet?
Yeah, maybe.
Well, we don't have to wait for an initiative to do something like that. We've got money that we can use, possibly with the CDBG funds that we don't put into a water and sewer line because we talked about sidewalks, curb and gutter, or even our maintenance funds too. So, if it's only a hundred feet-
Yeah, I don't think that particular area, that area doesn't fall into the HUD designated area, but there are other funding mechanisms to be able to put in a small gap in sidewalks.
Yeah, just a small gap. And I just assumed that, I didn't know where we'd fallen.
No, that's a good point. We need to do something like that.
I mean, our Road Improvement Fund allows for construction of sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there are kids in that new addition.
So, Kip might want to take a note of that.
That's awesome. I want to do it.
And GW is right. That is Scruggs. And I apologize. That is Scruggs.
I have to tell you, David and I have attempted this grant since twenty eighteen. So, this was our third attempt and it finally got funded. So, I can't even remember which all segments we've identified. But I remember several times driving in the golf cart with David and taking pictures and putting together the project proposal and trying to find all the specific gaps to make the connectivity.
Yeah.
So, now that we have somebody on the RTC, maybe that's helping. Because I got to be there for that first vote for this project. Now, we're getting the money for the charging station, so I reach out to the other mayors. They don't take us up on it, you know, or trying to give them this information, but they don't do anything, so.
We are.
It's our game.
We're gonna take advantage.
It's definitely a win.
We get more money.
Can, could you back up two slides? No, that's, okay, one more. You had a list of the engineering-
Yes.
That's it right there. If you, Teresa, that is that engineering work that goes in to get the sixty percent that they then handed off to utilities?
That makes a lot of sense.
So, that's, if you want to take a picture of one of the crescent, it says, "What do we do?" That's it.
Okay, perfect. And I think that's in this-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I apologize, I gave you the wrong information. That was Scruggs.
Oh, no, that's fine. It wasn't labeled on there, so, and I couldn't remember exactly which street it was falling on.
This is overall about two million out of our funds and six is matching? Is that, do I got in the right ballpark?
The total project's about six million.
Okay.
Yes. Construction.
Construction is six.
Yeah, so then you add the five hundred sixty thousand for engineering and design, which is at the city's full cost.
Right, and that comes up to close to two?
Plus two for construction. So, it's basically like almost two point six that the city's gonna pay.
Okay, that's the number I'm looking for.
And that's a lot of sidewalks that we need, so. And I know you're okay with this. You've been fighting for this yourself, John, so. But yes, we really need these sidewalks. They're just good for student safety, anybody out there walking safety. They help improve the look of neighborhoods, help with property values. They're all in all a good thing.
Alright, very good. Thank you.
And I'll move for approval.
Okay, you second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next item will be consider appointment of interim city manager. So, our city manager, I'll just give you the background information. City manager Candace Edmondson has submitted her resignation effective January second, two thousand twenty-six. City council is currently finalizing the employment agreement with a potential city manager candidate. To ensure continuity of operations during this transition period, city council will appoint Assistant City Manager, Police Chief Kim Sylvester to serve as an interim city manager beginning January third, two thousand twenty-six and continuing until the new city manager assumes duties anticipated around February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-six. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve Kim Sylvester as the interim city manager.
Effective, well, effective January second.
Effective-
And until the, until the new city manager takes position.
Thank you, you're right. And to include the terms discussed in executive session?
And to include the terms as discussed in executive session. And you have all that listed, right? Okay, very good, thanks.
Okay.
Alright, so.
Are we good with that?
Yep.
This is a motion? Okay.
I think Teresa's seconded.
Yes, I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We got a unanimous vote, alright. Alright, well, I was hoping to delay a little bit. Somebody was gonna show up. May not make it in time, but anyway, next item is consider appointment of city manager. And action was taken from the executive session and an agreement was made and the candidate has accepted the terms and no further action. We just need to, motion to approve.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the new city manager.
Alright.
And approve upon the agenda.
Alright, we have a second. It sounds like you just came through the door.
Maybe not.
Did he? It's not? Oh. Thought I heard the front door.
Oh. I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear it.
Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, unanimous there too. Next item will be street improvement projects. And I think Kelly is presenting tonight.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Kip Durnovich and Kelly Morris with the Public Works Department. Tonight to cover the street improvement projects. Kelly is going to start off and then he'll hand it back over to me and we'll finish up with Kelly in a bit. So, Kelly?
Alright, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, thanks for this opportunity for professional growth. As you know, we got the Series twenty twenty-three Bond Streets projects going on. Work authorization agreement from Half for designing Series twenty twenty-three Bond Agreement projects was approved January twenty twenty-four. All design work was completed in December twenty twenty-four. All gas line relocation has been completed, all the sewer, it's been done. Teas utilities was the subcontract under Reliable Paving. They have completed all their work. We are currently working with Reliable Paving on the roadway replacement for Mary Bowes, Jamison, Joanne Court, Brooks and Oxley. Oh, I was wondering where the clicker was. You got it? As you see, there's a brief picture of some dirt roads. Looks like big construction zone. We've been in a bit of a holding pattern with the pavement on Mary Boaz due to weather, temperatures, rain, equipment failures. We are, I just got the update this morning. They are doing densities tomorrow morning. They had a laydown machine that went out, a service. They won't get it till by Wednesday. So, to meet that seventy-two hour threshold, they wanted to hold off till last minute to do the densities once more. Now that they've done the densities over time, we haven't seen any failing numbers yet. So, that's been, it's been good. Speak about Half and their inspectors. I've been in contact with an inspector. His name's Chris. He usually beats me there in the morning. Ruins my breakfast about six-thirty every morning.
Good.
We're in contact throughout the day. He has a, he has a city background himself, so he understands the scope of the job. He's been doing this for some years. I know you talked about hours and David will still get you the numbers, but he's averaging about thirty to forty hours a week.
Oh, that's great.
Now, obviously during rain events, there's, when there's no need for him to be on site, he doesn't waste the hours. He gets our budgeting as well. He doesn't want to overspend his time.
Living in Richland Hills, I've always said, we may not have all the businesses.
I mean, any questions on the six streets projects?
So, do we have a timeline when the residents will have a street instead of mud?
Brief timeline. The scope of the project, they're given three hundred and sixty-five days to complete. Initially, they overshot. They thought by December they'd be out of the town, but you know how, Mayor, I'm sure you understand, being in the background. They're looking at April right now, early April.
About April seventh, so. They did, some of the areas that Kelly mentioned, they've been delayed and technically they started May twelfth, so they have three hundred and sixty-five days for the contract as the day of starting. So, April seventh is their projected timeline. They would still be under that year's contract timeframe. We, you know, we did mention to them in the beginning, try not to give us something that's what most people are gonna chomp down on. But unfortunately, just with the weather, the rain, things of that nature, they're not gonna be able to meet the end of the calendar year.
But also at that point, Mary Boaz, Jamison, I think Oxley will be the last road to get done. So, you'll have five complete roads come that timeframe. We won't be sitting with six different construction zones.
It's a tough time of year to try to lay asphalt too, because of the temperatures and all of a sudden.
Your asphalt plants won't even start, they won't start burning asphalt.
Are we gonna do asphalt or are we gonna do locktop?
That's the same thing. That's the same.
Okay. Then is the concrete what's different? Okay. Oh, my gosh. I'm gonna get this down.
You're gonna be an engineer.
Might be an engineer.
What about HMAC? No, I'm just kidding.
Alright, so, will the streets, they're gonna complete in the order listed, Mary Boaz, Jamison, Joanne Court, and?
Tentatively.
Okay.
I know Brooks and Oxley got flopped a couple of times, but this is, this is the order of the streets of completion they're aiming for at this point.
The good news is the traffic on Brooks is moving much slower.
Right.
The bad news is, it's not a really a street.
The residents have kind of reached out. They do appreciate the slower traffic the construction has caused because I guess a lot of people use it as a cut through from Walmart.
Yep.
Yeah.
Couple of these streets look like they're ready for asphalt?
Yes, so the first two pictures are the two sections of Mary Boaz and that third one being Jamison.
Yeah.
All the concrete work's been done. It's timing it just right with the densities and the proper equipment and personnel to lay the asphalt down. That's been the, need the stars to align.
Once you get your densities, then you could probably shoot it with a prime coat and then that way you don't have a dust.
That's their aim. Yes, sir.
Alright. That'll stop a few complaints.
That'll help a lot, yeah.
Have we had any complaints about the curbs like we did on Dover?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Because I know that was a big complaint, was how the curbs were. And so, I was just kind of curious if we've heard anything else about them with these?
Didn't hear that on Magnolia either. So, both have gone through with the Cox standards.
Okay. Was Magnolia done by a different company or was it the same company?
Magnolia was done with a different company. That was with Paul.
I'll turn it back over to Kip and-
We'll go from there.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
So, on some of our miscellaneous street projects, it's, you know, you brought up on, from time to time, some questions about specific data and unfortunately, we haven't always been able to give you those specifics because unfortunately, we weren't aware as either. So, sometimes on the total number of street signs, sometimes on how we approach certain things. We have requested some of that funding in the past for a variety of reasons, usually either higher priorities. It hasn't always gone through, but this year we were able to get approved funding through the city manager's budget process on two important- on two important areas. One is uploading the water and sewer maps to the GIS, uh, or the geographical information systems, that's hosted through half. And so we're able to upload that, folks will be able to go into a link through the city's website to access that. Uh, we've also looked at trying to find, we're currently, uh, in discussions to find other ways that we might be able to do it ourselves with some other departments. Uh, we've also had discussions with half in the past about developing an asset management database to include things like manholes, inlets, you know, all the different areas that Public Works, uh, takes a look at. In FY twenty twenty six budget, uh, I'm sorry, let me take one quick step back. Uh, two years ago, we did apply for a grant on an asset management system, unfortunately, weren't able to, uh, have that awarded to us. Uh, we did apply again, but I think we've got an option that we'll discuss next and kind of cover, uh, two particular areas with one, uh, funding source. In FY twenty twenty six, we'd like to look at a company by the name of Violytics. Uh, Violytics is a computer program that basically establishes a pavement condition index or a PCI score for all of Richland Hills roadway, roadways, it would include both, uh, street segments and an overall score, taking all of the street segments into consideration. Uh, it's an interesting approach, what it is, is you would drive all of the city's centerline miles with your phone, uh, with, excuse me, with an iPhone. You put the iPhone, you can mount it to the front or the dash. Uh, as you drive down the street, it's gonna feed into an algorithm, it's gonna pick up the alligator cracking, the rutting, et cetera. Feeds it into the system and then basically kind of spits back out each segment score and again, the overall score. Uh, an example of this is very similar to Google Maps. You can get onto Google Maps and move forward every a hundred feet, you would see that photo, you would be able to move forward. Uh, and then along with it, of course, you can sort of scan left and right and see all again, the inlets, the fire hydrants, et cetera. Um, that's every a hundred feet of roadway and it provides a visual and numerical score. So it's kind of tough to see, again, council member Whit, we're not always trying to make it hard on you, but if you look at the picture over on the right, you can see some different colors there, there's red, which would be the, the worst score. Uh, orange, which then would move up to the next level, yellow being in the middle of the roadway or the, the middle of the scoring system, move to a light green and then a green. Uh, you can look at it under that particular area or you can get a numerical score for each segment, which would be one being the lowest, one hundred being the best, again, each segment, and then the overall roadway system. Uh, utilizing, for example, council member Bledsoe's example of Dover, uh, you could have driven that and had a before score, redone the roadway, drive it again and upload it into the system and then get a new updated, not only segment score, but also then see the change that comes to the overall roadway system. Uh, one of the nice things about this particular product is it also provides you an asset management database of street signs, stormwater inlets, manholes, streetlights, hydrants, you name it. Uh, so we really see it as a, a, a two for one option that I think will be beneficial. We're in the process of receiving an official quote from them. Uh, they do meet all of the, like the Houston Council area gov, of governments, by board, et cetera. Um, I believe it's about a hundred and fifty dollars a centerline mile, so we would expect somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, that's an excellent price for something, uh, like this, and we think it'll be a, a good benefit. Once we've vetted that completely, we'll, we'll bring that back to you, of course, for approval in either the first or second, uh, meeting in January.
So what other cities are using this?
On Violytics, um, we, that's part of the things that we've requested from them, we've had a couple of different meetings. We'd asked them, can you please provide us other cities that are utilizing that, uh, how they've felt about it? Uh, they look usually at a three-year contract initial and then your option to either opt out or, you know, not renew. So again, we'll bring all of that back to you once we get that official quote.
So you'll call those other cities too?
Yes, sir, we'll check all of the, all of the, anything, recommendations, et cetera.
So this is a one-time fee when you pay this, even though it's a three-year commitment?
I believe it's actually gonna be fifteen thousand each year.
Oh.
But we'll, we'll double check on that, that's where we've asked it, what kind of options can you provide us? It's relatively, it's very similar to a company by the name of Robotics that's been utilized in the past.
Okay.
I think Goodyear actually bought them out and kind of canceled them out so that they wouldn't have some of the competition. Violytics has jumped up in their place, so again, we're just, we wanted to make sure that you had an awareness of it so that when we bring it back, we'll have it fully vetted, uh, but we think it would be a good option. If not, we also have the traditional PCI opportunity and, and other, other avenues we can.
This would replace the PCI that we've budgeted for?
Uh, it possibly.
It could?
It could, yes, sir.
Okay. And are we doing the driving or are they doing the driving?
We would do the driving.
Okay.
We could, within that year contract, we could drive it every day if we wanted. It's not limited to one time a year.
Okay.
So throughout.
And, and this will, the, one of the, I see a challenge with this is that we've got, we'll have water and sewer in one GIS system and we'll have streets in another.
You can integrate with the, based on one map.
Would that, where, where, where would we integrate that, would that go with the half database or would that go with the Violytics database?
The goal would be, well, it would have to be through half, we would, we would work through them to basically have an upload to it, similar to what they do now. There'd be a link through the city's website to move it over.
Okay.
Uh, the one other option, again, just to, sorry to, to mention a few things that I forgot. Uh, you are able to also do kind of, uh, forecasting, if you will. So through this, you'd be able to say, if I wanted to repair all of the red roadways or all of the yellow, which is right in the middle, what would be the cost associated with that and how long might it take to present, you know, put together that type of plan? So I think that also gives us not only the analytic side of it, but also some of the forecasting and budget planning for the future.
So this gives us, you, the pavement condition analysis, so, or index, but it doesn't do anything for the underground utilities at all, does it?
Uh, we wouldn't be able to utilize it for that aspect, no, we would still need to rely on, on the Atmos and the Sioux.
But it al, it does also.
But I'm, I'm talking about water and sewer.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah, that, that would be, again, as kind of as, as council member Skier mentioned, we would still need to upload everything to the GIS system. And this particular one, it would only be things above ground.
So one of the things I've talked about with Candace before was that when you're driving these streets and you're trying to identify which streets are in really bad shape and they have like ten patches on them, that's a street you know you gotta replace under all the utilities. But like when they're talking about Scruggs from Glen Hills to twenty-six, it's in pretty darn good shape, there are no patches there at all. But that's one of those that can be revitalized, so when the PCI shows it's good, I guess what I'm saying is when you drive these streets, you need to make note of how many patches you have on that street. So that tells you how many water and sewer patches you've had to make in the years past. And that kind of gives us an idea, well, we really can't even do anything with this street, even though it's in bad shape unless we get three million dollars for it. That kind of stuff, so.
And, and I think that it would be one of the other areas that would, would work in a type of application like this, is that we would also be able to let the citizens know, you know, um, I understand completely that if you're out driving on something in front of your house every day, well, to you, you're thinking, this is definitely the worst street in Richland Hills. Where there would be an opportunity with something like this to be able to say, well, actually, if you go here, you can see that there's a different priority and this is the reason why perhaps it's being delayed a little bit. Or you're absolutely right, this is a red road and, or, you know, or a score of ten and this is the reason why we need to go to it, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay, yes, sir.
So as the software engineer on the city council here, I want one map on our website with everything on it. One map.
We believe we deliver that.
I want the water stuff, the sewer stuff, the road grading, the lights, the.
This program even logs park equipment, we could take it off the truck and walk with it through the parks and.
Okay, but I want, I want a webpage on our website where I can go see that every day, I wanna see it. And it's up to date, every time you drive it, it's up to date the next day. That's what I want, that's what our citizens want, I want to share that with them, I don't want it hidden behind half's GIS system or our Public Works sewer water system, I don't want, get it all out here where we can see it. Okay? That's the goal.
Yes, sir.
That you should be marching.
Actively striving for it.
Okay.
So I have a question, um, I had asked you once before, I think when we was talking about the budget and stuff. How, would this even be able to tell us how old the infrastructure under the concrete is? So we know how long of lifeline we have on this?
Un- unfortunately, no, that, that would probably be very similar to some of the things that would be on, on the half website. I mean, you're looking, depending upon, uh, the maps, sometimes we have some city maps that are, that are really actually just old, I guess, hand.
Some old blueprints from line replacements from.
Yeah, and we, and we have some ideas when those are dated, unfortunately, just over time, uh, the, the city has not done the best at updating and letting, uh, keeping accurate records on the age of the infrastructure. So we will, again.
Is there a way to fix that, that we can go from here forward to start practicing some of that?
We sure are trying and striving, yes, ma'am. We're working on, on much of the historical data that we can upload and, and again, getting the best timelines that we can to kind of get a, uh, informed decision-making process on it. I don't know, again, I wanna make clear, I don't know that we can give you, you know, nineteen ninety-five, but we can probably get fairly close.
Well, just know that whenever you go to a street and y'all looking at, let's just say you're gonna look at doing Norton and you're like, okay, I'm looking at that, but the infrastructure from this block to this block is thirty-five years old, it's gonna need to be replaced. But the infrastructure from the previous block didn't, I was just kind of curious if there was a way that it could be in the database so when we look at the whole picture, we can go, these are the segments that the infrastructure is fixing up at all.
Yes, sir.
You've now heard this three different ways.
One map.
I said, put the two sets of data together, he said one map. We, we've, whatever we're gonna try to do, cause to get that, the, the, the whole objective is to be able to point a citizen at this and say, this is where you sit and have that picture be accurate. So it needs to include the, the sewer and the water and the drainage as well as the street index.
Traffic lights and the fire hydrants and the potholes and the curb and gutter and everything else, right?
But if I'm trying to go for replacing a street, I'm not gonna care about the street lights and the fire hydrants, but I do agree with you, they need to be there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm not following, it's like, why is this, why do you want it on the website? On the city website for what, I mean, are our residents sitting around it not saying, I wanna look at the sewer and water maps of the city?
Yeah.
Is, are they?
Absolutely.
You really think so?
I, I absolutely.
Not you, I'm saying the residents.
I, I've been asked.
What will they find out?
For that.
What will they find out?
There's a bunch of them that like to see that.
I think a lot of people would like to see it, but I don't know how far we wanna get into the weeds with everybody second guessing what we do too. Cause they'll say, why is my street better? Why would mine work?
What is it that they would be looking for? I, I'm a resident and you, you notified me now that this is available, what?
I, I can give you, let me, let me give you an example, right? Forget that I'm on the council for a minute, Scruggs is one of the crappiest roads on our side of town, for sure.
Totally agree.
I would love to know, how old is the, uh, the subsurface utilities on that road? Is it thirty-five years old, is it eighty-two years old, right? Um, how many times has it been patched? Where is it on the schedule to be fixed? I wanna know that and I don't wanna have to come to a council meeting once a month and email everybody. Uh, it, it should just be right there, right? I should be able to see it, that's what I'm interested in, right? Other people wanna know, well, like the question I asked earlier, well, where are our streetlights? Are we, are we, are they every two hundred and fifty feet where they were supposed to be? And there's engineers and people in our city who'd like to know that. Because if they're not, I want a streetlight right here, right by my house or two stuff, two houses down. I, I, those are things that people wanna know, but it's too hard to know.
Good. Uh, we, the, great point, we will, uh, definitely work on getting the one map system, we'll also continue to have discussions with, whether it be Encore or Atmos or Performance Services, uh, I believe it's Integration, uh, that did the, uh, uh, meter project. Uh, we're also having discussions with all of them about are there other ways where we would be able to consolidate things and through savings, whether it be the wellhouses or the manholes or whatever it might be, to try to find, uh, savings that then would allow us to make improvements and have a funding source for that. So we will take all of that into consideration, definitely, uh, have, have duly noted, uh, your concerns and what you'd like to have moving forward. Uh, the next area that we'd like to cover is with the maintenance plan. Uh, we do appreciate that this year you provided additional funding for that maintenance plan. Uh, these are some of the areas that we have, uh, a desire to move forward with. So, uh, know that, that you all have, uh, you know, been around town, uh, had some questions about the cog traffic signal grant. Uh, that grant provides funding for all three traffic signals throughout Richland Hills. Uh, we're required to pay the labor to install that. We'd also look at ordering some extra parts, uh, anticipate about twenty thousand dollars that would need to be spent there.
Which three signals are these?
Right.
Uh, that's going to be the Ruth and Glenview, Glenview and Booth and then Booth, and I always mess that one up.
It's, uh, Ruth and Glenview, Glenview with Callaway and Hamlet and Uterville Trinity before.
There we go. Always mess up the three.
Those are our three.
What was the last?
Hamley and where?
Hamley, well, Burns would be our side, but Trinity.
It's on the other side of the track.
Isn't that Fort Worth?
By the seven eleven?
Yeah, kind of.
It's, it's right after.
Yeah, I mean, it's close.
That's our, yeah, it's our intersection.
I don't wanna put the bill for Fort Worth again, you know, it just, we seem to be owning everything that touches us, so.
Yeah, and those one, that's always been, been our, been the three particular areas that we're, where we could, we could try. I mean, we could always ask and see if they'd like to take it back. We, we would assume they would say no, but, but nothing, nothing worse they can say is no, so.
And what, what's the updating? What, what's?
Uh, basically just, it's, uh, it'd be part of a grant to basically update all of the equipment. It's slightly aged, some of it needs to be just renewed, just it kind of wears out over time. And so it'd be new, uh, traffic signal boxes, new signal heads themselves, poles, et cetera. A lot of that would get incorporated into the Glenview project itself, um, but some of those particular areas. One little thing to add, you know, we have our through crew leads, um, uh, Jesse Pearson, Pedro Martinez and Huang Pham. They've all recently through consolidated traffic, uh, controls have gone to a traffic signal box training. They have some of the basics, some of the troubleshooting that they're able to take a look at as well, so we continue to work on some of those things. Uh, under the area of street markings, some of the areas that we'd like to pursue is Vance and Ash, Popplewell, Norton. That would include things like shoulder marking, center marking, stop bars, et cetera, about twenty thousand dollars there. Um, a couple of areas that with Ruth Snow and Hamley Uterville, we've, we've covered those in the past. And then of course, State Route twenty-six and Baker are text dot roadways that as they make improvements there, they'll, they'll move forward on any of those areas. Uh, we do have, uh, Mr. Mayor, a, a, um, call in to Jose Gomez and David Salazar, they've talked about uh, the flashing intersection there at Booth and Baker or Booth Callaway and Baker. So, uh, looking, looking at trying to get that, uh, discussed as well, so just definitely moving forward.
Have we, have we had any feedback from them on that signal set?
I sent them an email, they sent an extensive email back.
Oh, cause she's gotten some feedback.
Twenty-six until they get the traffic study done and get the signals coordinated so that you don't just blow through it, because that's what people do, so. Sitting there the other day and some guy just, right on through it, you know?
But definitely, we're aware as well, and you know, and just trying to push them the best that we can. Uh, sometimes it moves a little slow with text dot, but they've got a lot going on, so we'll continue to try.
Our bathrooms a while to get done?
Yeah, we'll provide the, yeah, we'll provide.
Let's not go that way.
This is one signal, go tweak it, right?
Right? No, it's actually connecting the two between Hurst and Ruslan Hills, that's the, that's what I was looking at. All right, so we, you've got some extensive feedback in twenty-six for the study, maybe.
I, I, I put something together for you all.
I would most appreciate it, cause we need it.
Yeah.
Uh, moving forward on the curb and, sorry about that, on the curb and gutter list, we currently have eleven locations that are listed with our six street segment project, we'll have two that are taking care of leaving nine. Uh, with this, a hundred thousand dollars worth of funding, all other locations will be completed. Think probably we'll get several more, um, you know, but, but right now we'll have, uh, again, we'll, we'll make sure that folks know where they can either email us or call and put things in, but we'd anticipate about a hundred thousand dollars that we'd like to spend in the curb and gutter area. Again, meeting all, everything currently on the list and anything that comes up through the rest of twenty-six. Uh, we'd also have our overlay or any patch areas to roadways. Again, there are numerous locations throughout town that are gonna need TLC. Uh, we, we hope that the Violytics and PCI score will help us dial in on, on locations that we need to look at first. Some of the areas of concern are gonna be areas like Matthews, Bridges, Davidson, Kingsbury, Ru, excuse me, Reeves, Ruth and Hardisty. We'd look at putting about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that particular, uh, area. And then again, if, if funding allows, um, and there's a wide variety of ways, we can have savings from other projects, as we mentioned, maybe with the asset management. Uh, Oak Park, there were some savings on last year's project. Uh, we think there's probably going to be some savings from Mimosa Park with the, with the, uh, county overlay project. All of those areas can then also be put back into any of these particular areas that we think that we might need it. Uh, but some of the areas we wanna make sure that we look at, uh, at least a minimum of fifty thousand is in the area of valley gutters, uh, replacement, crack sealing with, uh, Tarrant County, they can come out and kind of do it en masse. Uh, streetlight enhancement, looking at potential slurry seal options, uh, you know, you, you kind of name it. This is the, the miscellaneous category of, if you will. Uh, this is a flexible framework, so again, some of these numbers could go up or down depending upon of, just like, uh, you know, Kelly was speaking to earlier, weather gets in the way, whatever it might be, if we start digging. weather gets in the way, whatever it might be, if we start digging, we find something and say, oh, we're gonna need to move a few funds over here. Again, this would be the fr, the flexible framework that we would wanna start with, uh, and then move forward from there.
And also locations could change as well, if we do move forward with violets and we.
Right.
Like I said, these are biased opinions, we're getting with violets, get us unbiased and.
One of the things that I get concerned about, and I've talked to Candace about it, that was over there on, on, um, Glen Hills, all the curb and gutter there, the curb and gutter was chewed up on top, but it, there was no drainage issue. We spent thirty thousand dollars on that, and I'm just wondering, is it because of our contractor that doesn't wanna go in there and do little, little pieces?
We used to do the piecing in the past, uh, with, even when we do the county roadway projects, we would do a hundred feet here, a hundred foot there.
Yeah.
Drop down and then you got brand-new curb, nice driveways, and then a section of old curb.
Yeah.
We thought it may be beneficial just to, you cover it all.
The reason I ask though is because money doesn't go very far, you know, when we sit down and we do a whole budget at one location, because there's so many locations around town that need these little. And I know it's not, that's not a, a good thing that Reliable likes to do, because they don't make as much money that way unless they can just sit there and stay for a week and get their work done, you know, so. You know, I'm not too sympathetic with them, because they're making good money. We do have other contractors that you have, you know, contracts with too, so I'd like to see some of these smaller areas too, where you have water that sits there for six or eight inches for, you know, we've talked about that over on, uh, on a, what is it? Glen.
Richland.
Richland, yeah.
It's been like that.
I mean, it's just horrible, those people, I would be here.
I'll tell you what, if I lived there.
I'd be in a city council meeting every week until you all got it done.
Yeah.
And I know it takes more than just a little bit of curb and gutter, but you can also overlay some of that stuff too, and the water will flow through. So I'm, it's just, anyway.
I think, Mayor, I think part of what I'm hearing is, prior councils took a lot of hits for the inconsistent look and how it wasn't the same. And I think Public Works got the direction, let's go through and do it all at once so that it's all at the same level. And this council's position is, let's get the best bang for our buck. And it may not look as good, but it will deliver more value to the citizens.
Right.
And that, that's it, and so, to a sense, we've given you the change in marching direction, but.
Right.
Sure, not a problem.
Bang for the most residents' buck is the, is obviously our payout.
Can't fix it all, but we can, we can spread it further, that's it.
So are some of our streetlights out on these backlit signs on Baker? Are some of the bulbs out?
Uh, I, I don't believe so, but we can definitely take a.
Friday night when I was coming to the Christmas lighting, I was sitting at Vance, and I noticed three of the lights were lit up, but one of them wasn't. And then when I got to Faith, cause you know, I get to hit every street light trying to get here. And so I noticed there was two that wasn't lit and two was, so I was just kinda curious if the light bulbs were, cause I saw on that one, you said.
That's all brand new.
Light bulbs.
Yeah.
They're under warranty.
They can drive it off.
Yeah, I don't, so sometimes I know that they do come on at various different times, so maybe depending upon, you know, how close to dusk or whatever it might have been.
It was six o'clock.
Different things, but so, kind of in that particular timeframe, sometimes they, they'll come on a little bit, they're, they're not all at the same time.
Okay.
But we can definitely make sure that they're all working, not a problem.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, on, uh, the, the next area, one of the things that we'd like to do is look at our Public Works website. Uh, we'd like to create a couple of different pages, and we've met with Sheena and Landon, appreciate all of their. Uh, one of the things that we would like to do is create what we call Streetsmart. And that's gonna be a listing of all capital improvement projects throughout the city, where folks can go there and look at the scope of the project, the project status, uh, a map, photos, kind of updates similar to things that you saw today. Uh, we believe that's a way that they'll be able to see their dollars at work and kinda put a visualization to it, not just, just reading about it. Uh, we'd also like to create an area that we would call Public Works one oh one. Again, short videos broken down by areas of emphasis and all the areas that we utilize. Uh, as Councilman Brestup has mentioned, believe it or not, there are folks that wanna know what's in a sewer line, and they wanna know maybe what is beneath the manhole. So we'd be able to take this small camera down, film it and show them and say, there you go.
I don't, I don't wanna know what's in the sewer.
A little bit, yeah, sometime, some folks don't, some folks do, right?
I wanna see the condition.
Kinda give you an idea, a Landon.
As a chlorine residual test on the.
Yeah, you know, Landon McBride, our, our communications manager came up with an idea of, you know, like a following the street sweeper around. Being able to show folks, this is before, this is after, just some small ideas of this is what Public Works does on a daily basis. Kind of almost, you know, just, just an opportunity to educate them, and again, to see where their dollars are going. Uh, we would also list a status list of, uh, all Public Works Department requests. So if somebody calls in about a pothole, they'd see the day that it came in, what it is, and it would then more or less have come, you know, something in a status, whether it be pending, whether it be completed, whatever it might be.
And add potholes on the map.
Yeah, they would then be able to know that this has been, been noticed, it's been identified, and it's been completed. And then we'd also put the curb and gutter list there so folks could see that as well.
I think that's a great idea.
So just some of the, the areas, uh, that we're interested in, uh, and trying to do again on the Public Works website. With that, I'll turn it back over to Kelly briefly, and then we'll finish up with any questions that you might have.
That was real proactive though, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And while this isn't quite a street project, we thought we'd try to squeeze it in real quick.
I'm sure y'all have seen, I mean, I know a few of y'all live in the area, the Scruggs Water Tower, um, we're nearing completion on the paint job on that. That was kind of a, I think it was a big deal for Public Works, ever since I've been here, I've not known that tank to have been drained. Ever since growing up in the area, it's always been that pale blue with that block lettering up high. Even going to drain the tank, their only thing on the tank to drain it was a two-inch plug. We, I literally had to isolate a section of the main and bleed it through a fire hydrant to drain it.
Yep.
So we're getting an actual drain valve installed for the next go around. Um, they've completed all inside maintenance, been primed, um, they are now just working on the outside coat, once again, mother nature. Uh, they can't apply paint to a surface that's below forty degrees, won't stick. Uh, they found the blue for the under, the bottom underbelly, um, they had to put a couple more coats on it than they thought was required. It was a little blotchy at first, I don't know if y'all saw that, but I, driving by, I was like, surely they're not done, and of course they were, so.
Good.
Yeah.
It's a nice color.
Yeah, I think it's gonna turn out real well, um, obviously it'll have the new logo and basically what's behind y'all on there, so.
On two sides too.
Two logos.
Yeah, so you'll see it either way.
Yep.
So, gonna be nice.
Um, also, that being said, we only have two elevated storage tanks. Scruggs is a five hundred thousand gallon, the other tank we're relying on right now is London, that is only a one hundred gallon tank. I mean, this is kinda for the public.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Um, this is kinda for the public as well. The emails and notifications are nice, if we are seeing water come up from the street, please call dispatch, non-emergency, two eight one one thousand. That's, uh, sooner we can know about a leak, the sooner we can isolate and get it repaired.
Yeah.
With only working with a hundred thousand gallons, it's, the water goes by real quick.
Yeah, I think there's a leak up on Popplewell too, I don't know if you've seen it.
Have not.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's, it's either Popplewell or Vance.
We had one on, we had one on Vance.
Maybe it's on Vance, I just saw it over the weekend.
Yeah, we were able to, uh, isolate that section, I had ran into a personnel issue, um, two of the, two of the crew leads were testing. One passed, so you got a new C distribution license, so it was a big win for that.
Yeah.
Um, just, the guys were all over the place, so we found it easier to isolate it and save it for this morning, we were able to knock that out this morning.
Good, good.
Alright.
Interesting, isolated. Quick question, uh, drain valve, was that included in the initial estimate, or is that was, this came, that was a surprise?
Surprise.
Okay.
Yeah, it was surprising, I was walking up to it that morning and finally realizing, cause I never really thought, oh, where's the drain valve? And walking up to it, I was like, no, there's, there's a two-inch plug, and I can't just open that and shoot it off into the backyards of the neighbors.
Oh, yes, it would, oh, it would.
That would have been.
That would've taken a long time.
I know you guys were, I know there was some, since I live right there, there was some head scratching for a couple days on what, what to do.
Well, and the hydrant, the guys, the crews were using for their water supply, I guess, got ran over, so we'll be out there tomorrow morning replacing that hydrant.
Yeah. So did, did McGuire do that n, new drain line, or did you, you guys do that?
The, they're installing the port with the flange on, we'll install the valve.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, following that, any questions?
How much of the earlier presentation is funded versus need, questionable? I, I saw the last item for, um, the last bullet was things it would like to do, is everything above that funded?
Uh, more or less, everything above that would be funded, there's about fifty thousand dollars for that last one.
Yeah.
And, and as we mentioned, we're, we're flexible with all of it, if there's a, if we find that there's a bigger need later, you know, we can definitely move funding around. Uh, but I'd say that really, all of it, at least with the dollar amounts that were associated next to it, are definitely funded.
Okay.
Uh, again, it's just that it's a little bit flexible in what we might need to do.
So do we know when the next time the street sweeper will be out?
I've not scheduled it just yet.
Okay, does that know there's lots and lots of mud from them doing all the, uh, uh, Atmos work?
Yeah, unfortunately with the mud, the street sweeper's gonna smear it everywhere, roads need to be dry. Um, obviously with the leaves too from fall, but then it's been pretty wet here lately, so I think the sweeper would make more of a mess than anything right now.
Okay.
So. We'll definitely take a look at the, the forecast and try to find a little bit of time to hopefully kinda help dry it out, and then make sure to give everybody the advance notice, we try to work with, with Landon and Sheena to let them know online, and then also try to post some signage up to make sure they can move the vehicles and everything else, but always will give plenty of advance notice, I'd say probably sometime in the next couple months, most definitely.
That's what I was thinking more towards like March, somewhere around that timeframe.
I still got leaves falling in my house.
Yeah, leaves are still coming up.
Yeah.
Has Atmos given you an update on where they are closing out the projects with us?
Uh, not just yet, no, but we can definitely check with Lee and find out how much longer they might be. I know they've been working in both the southern and northern region of Richland Hills for quite some time. Uh, but I think it's all really just a benefit of updating the infrastructure, but I'll find out a little bit better timeline from, from Lee.
Uh, what I've heard, my area of the town is they were targeting end of December. Based on what I'm seeing, I'm thinking they're gonna slide it to end of January. They're making great, they're, you know, they're doing, they're out daily, even bad weather, but.
We haven't been getting as many locates for the south side of town, I feel like the majority of the locates from them have been coming from the north side off Glenview.
Okay. They are religious about locating your pipes.
I, yes, they, they, they don't matter, if it's Saturday or Sunday, they'll call me and ask for the guys to come out and mark the lines for them. It's, which I'm thankful for, we've had, spent a lot of late nights here for no marking, for no call.
Oh, yeah. Alright, thank y'all very much.
We will just wanna end on, again, appreciate the extra funding, appreciate your support of us, so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Good job, both of you.
Okay.
They're gonna present, so. Ronnie and Christian are presenting.
Oh, they are, okay. Alright, well, uh, PD will be next, for their department report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, Captain Ronnie Miller will be presenting on the Police Department, and Lieutenant Christian Daytan will be presenting on Community Compliance.
Uh, Lieutenant Daytan's just gonna stand here for more support while I present on the Police Department, and I'll do the same for him for Community Compliance. Uh, like Chief Sylvester said, I will be presenting for the, uh, Police Department, uh, October twenty twenty-five monthly report. Uh, starting off here with the service calls, uh, one of the things I wanna touch on is, uh, total calls for service, we are for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-four, we are up about seven hundred and fifty calls for service, um, this year. Uh, traffic stops, three hundred and sixty-eight, uh, roughly three hundred and sixty traffic stops, we're up from twenty twenty-five from twenty twenty-four. And then another thing there are arrests for October twenty twenty-five, we're up to about forty-eight traffic stops for, uh, twenty twenty-five in October. Um, thank God our murder, our sexual assaults and robberies are down to zero, um, but, uh, our aggravated assaults are up three, we had three for the month of October. Um, with that being said, we are below our year-to-date for twenty twenty-five at nine, um, compared to twenty twenty-four, which was at ten. Uh, obviously the tall chart there is a simple assault, so we can go into that one, it's, it's much higher this year, but in October, we were, uh, down to just one.
Say what?
One person in particular, or what?
One assault, one simple assault.
And then sixty-eight since then?
Sixty-nine for the entire, uh, year-to-date.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'm sorry, I may have went by that, I was.
Okay, it's, are, are we running fiscal year here, or are we running, uh, calendar year?
Calendar.
Okay.
Our crime stats have to be calendar for FBI reporting.
So, yeah, so.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying there, fiscal year, that would've been an alarming number for sure.
Well, actually, it's maybe more alarming where it's sixty-nine, whereas we got two months to go.
I can see that, yes, sir.
Well, October would be the first month of this fiscal year, and that would be sixty-nine, that would be.
That would be really alarming.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir. Um, going to the next slide here, um, larceny, just to explain again, larceny is all, all thefts minus your burglaries that we have here, so kinda going into this. Um, our larceny, we did have nine for the month of October, um, but we are down eleven from the previous year, so, um, that is, that is positive there. Um, speaking of criminal investigations here, um, they've, you can see the orange are our charts for twenty twenty-five. Um, uh, they've been working very hard in that division there. I can say that here in the October, our search warrants are up to five, they've served five search warrants in October, and issued two misdemeanor warrants, um, in the month of October. Uh, going into traffic accidents for the month of October, that number eleven, I know that kinda standing out there, we do have a number of eleven traffic, or major accidents that took place in the month of October. Um, but with that being said, we are down nineteen overall from twenty twenty-four, so that number is going down. It is down on minor accidents, as well as our crash reports, as you can see from the charts here. Um, referring to the traffic unit, uh, the stats here for the traffic unit, the year-to-dates are a little off compared to the year before because it wasn't fully implemented the entire year, um, so those numbers are gonna be a little bit off. Uh, I will, the traffic numbers for the month of October for traffic stops, a hundred and seventy-nine, um, those stops were sixteen days that she did complete. She was working sixteen days of that, so the a hundred and seventy-nine stops came in sixteen days, so.
That's nice.
And I will say that we had to pull her from that traffic unit for staffing, uh, reasons, uh, recently. And so, um, we don't have anybody designated right now for the next probably, until we get somebody out of training, which will be, Wins Martinez is gonna project to come out.
Probably another twelve weeks still.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be a few, a few months before we get somebody in there. But she, in, talking about the sixteen days, um, even as part of that, you know, she serves as the ba, that position serves as the bailiff as well on Thursdays. So there's a lot you can pretty much say on the Thursdays where there's court, that's, she is not out, you know, really being able to work the traffic, um, because she's in here serving as bailiff till usually at least noon or one o'clock. And so, I mean, you know, just from a performance indicator, she's still doing quite a bit, you know, in the time that she's working for the hours that she's putting in.
She's the only one, she did a hundred and seventy-nine stops in October.
For sixteen days.
So we only have one.
And taking Thursdays off.
Well, she's not off.
Well, I mean, not, not doing traffic stops.
Yes, yes.
In, in, basically it's fifteen days, saying that she got a half-day on Thursdays. That's, that's.
Each Thursday.
Wow.
So we only have one officer that chose the streets for traffic violations?
So currently, we have assigned one, one officer to the traffic unit, all of our patrol officers also enforce traffic violations and whatnot, but we have one designated for our traffic unit, which does, uh, all of our traffic, uh, complaints that are coming in from the citizens, as well as any of our accidents that take place, she works all of our accidents while she's on duty, um, and then also fills in with patrol when needed, so. She does, she does a lot of things, as well as obviously the bailiff on Thursdays.
But then how many patrol do we have?
Overall total?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are allotted for.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven total sworn. Um, one of those positions is the traffic unit.
Okay.
This is just the traffic unit stats, so patrol has, the, that other slide is what the patrol's performance indicators are for traffic stops and violations and arrests.
Okay.
So you also have patrol, but most of the time you only have two to three officers out there at a time.
Now, you know, that was what I was wanting to know.
Answering calls for service.
Okay.
So their, their ability to run traffic proactive, what we call proactive enforcement, is dictated by their time that is available not spent on calls for service. Where the traffic unit's primary, uh, goal is proactive enforcement. Theirs is more responsive and proactive, so their time has to be spent whenever it's available, that's why.
So I used to see one sitting out off the Service Road for one twenty-one, and I haven't seen that in a long time.
She's been out there, um.
Cause usually they were like, got them pulled over, I mean, constantly got them people pulled over.
She, I know she's worked, I, cause I hear her marking out on traffic.
Yeah, she's working a lot of those traffic complaints, but there's, we've gotten more, um, a lot more on the north side of the city here that we've been, she's been kind of focusing on. She hasn't just, uh, completely ignored the south side. She is working, uh, the one twenty one access road as well.
Okay, cool, thank you.
So do y'all patrol the city streets quite a bit too? Cause I hear the sirens on Baker, on twenty six a lot, you know. On twenty six, it seems like North Richland Hills covers all of it, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, they got anything on the, on the actual roadway, we have everything to the south of the roadway. So, I mean, anything on the roadway, we would not be dealing with it, minus the one triangle section that we have, I think, in the sixty-three hundred block of Boulevard twenty six that somehow it's the city of Richland Hills, but that, any accident that happens in that area, it's always Richland Hills and North Hills makes sure they, uh, let everybody know that it's ours, so.
I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Uh, going into some of our accomplishments for October, um, we were able to partner with Virgul SD, and successfully design and implement a traffic plan for Jacksey Binion. Um, the, the purpose of this was for reducing traffic issues in the neighborhoods. I know that we, everybody's seen the pictures out there. We've got some traffic delays, we've got people blocking driveways, we've got people parking their cars in the middle of the streets. Um, we were able to, uh, implement that plan. Um, it has been successful. We have had, uh, less traffic complaints down there by a long shot and the pickup line at Jacksey Binion has reduced by about ten minutes. So it's getting the cars in, out and on their way, so.
Yeah, cause I don't hear hardly any complaints from Crites over at Cheney anymore like we used to.
Oh, that's true.
Hoping that's the same, same thing here at Jacksey Binion. We're gonna keep, keep, keep working to it. Um, our officers, I'm sorry, our officers did attend the ten parties along with a lot of you guys for Texas Night Out. I'm just continuing to build that bond with our community. Um, it's always a fun night to go out and hang out with the citizens and you guys, so. Uh, Sergeant Pratt, uh, received the Enforcement Hero of the Year from Mothers Against Driving, uh, MAD for his outstanding efforts in our DWI enforcement. Uh, he was selected, he was the, I, I, I know that I'm gonna say that he had the most DWIs in our department. You guys are gonna say, how many is that? I don't remember what that number was. I apologize. I can get that number for you if you want that. Um, Sergeant Foo attended Patrol Rifle Instructor, um, course, becoming one of Richland Hills' first patrol officer or patrol rifle instructors. Um, before, we had to utilize other agencies for that. It's been a huge, it's gonna be a huge asset for us to be able to train our officers with our people, um, instead of having to utilize, uh, other agencies and rely on them to set up a date for us to do it. So that's gonna be a big asset to us. Um, and lastly, uh, Sergeant Pratt graduated from ILEA, uh, School of Police Supervision, class number one forty-eight. Um, this is a month-long course that takes place, uh, goes over a lot of different leadership topics. Um, it's a, it's an awesome class. Myself, I think myself, Lieutenant Gatan, Chief, Officer McCacken, it's all been through those classes. It's a good course out there and he brings, he's brought back a lot already that he's trying to implement, so I think it's been, been good for us, so. Uh, if you guys don't have any questions for me right now, I'm going to turn my pointer over to Lieutenant Gatan to take over.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, I'll be talking about our Community Compliance, uh, Unit, um, for the month of October. Um, I'm just gonna highlight some of the, uh, some of the points here, uh, for calls for service. As you can see, the dispatch calls, we've had an increase on that. That is because our Community Compliance Team is more proactive and out there, um, on the streets as they're driving with code violations, but and also in their dual, uh, dual-purpose role as animal control officers as well. As you have seen also on here, there's a, there's a spike in, uh, in twenty twenty five of animals at large. We have, uh, one oh six as of this year compared to forty-nine in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then obviously the other big number here that stands out is gonna be the community contacts. In twenty twenty-four, we have, we had fifty-three. This year, we're at two hundred and thirty-two contacts. Um, again, that's our Community Compliance Team being out there making contact with our residents, not only for the animal services side, but also about for our, uh, code enforcement side. On impounds and adoptions, uh, I'll, I'll touch on one of the biggest things here. Um, the dog adopted, um, for twenty twenty-four was eighty-eight. For twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, we're at eighty-three. Wanted to point out that one because we had a, a dog, Sarah, who's a brown mutt, that had been at the shelter for eight, eight hundred and fourteen days.
Wow.
Um, she got, she got adopted in October, um, obviously that's over two years that she was at the shelter, so.
Wow.
Um, I'm very proud that she found a home and was able to go home to a family. Um, dogs impounded in twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and twenty-five. This year, we're at a hundred and sixty-two. That's a spike in, in those numbers as well. Calls for service for code. So, um, courtesy notices. So I'll kind of, I'll talk about the numbers and I'll explain the process on how we get to an abatement process. Uh, so courtesy notice happens, uh, when our code Community Compliance Team observes a violation, what they do. Um, if they're not able to make contact with those residents face-to-face, um, they give out the courtesy notice. They're placed the courtesy notices on the residence front, front door. Um, obviously in twenty twenty-four, we had zero. This year, we're very proactive. We've gotten up to forty-nine. Now, this breaks it down to, after the courtesy notice, we wait ten days, then, then we issue a first notice of violation, right? Another ten days go by, we issue a second notice of violation, which is another ten days. At that point, if we see the residents, they're not complying with the, the violation or fixing the problem, um, then we go into, we either issue a citation or we proceed with the abatement process. That is also determined by the severity of what cases we're looking at on those residents. If it says, obviously it's a, uh, health and safety issue, then obviously we're gonna go the abatement, abatement route. Um, as you could see, uh, one of the big numbers that stands out is, uh, here as well, is the community contacts, right? Um, in twenty twenty-four, we had five hundred and sixty. This year already, we're at seven hundred and ninety-three, uh, community contacts. That's, uh, our Community Compliance Team going out there and making contact with those residents. Compliance obtained, last year in twenty twenty-four, we had eight hundred and three. As of right now, we're at, for the month of October, uh, we had twenty-seven, but total we're at five hundred, five hundred and eleven, uh, total compliance obtained. Meaning our residents have complied with whatever issue, whatever violation that was.
I'm, I'm gonna say something real quick, just to kind of on these graph here. Uh, it is a little, the numbers are a little off here. It's gonna show, you're gonna see year-to-date twenty twenty-four for courtesy notice, first notice of violation, second notice of violation, it says zero. The only reason that that says that is initially with this report just had violations and then, uh, compliance obtained citations. Uh, we wanted to break this down to make it a little bit easier to understand. Um, so what we did there was we broke it down to our courtesy violations, initial courtesy, uh, violations, the first notice of violation, second notice of violation. So that chart's showing those numbers only, and it looks like that only because we're just now starting that this month to try and make it a little easier to understand how, kind of how that process works. And, uh, Lieutenant Gatan is gonna go into the process, kind of explaining how each step works. But that is the reason why those numbers look zero. I know a couple of you guys saw, look at it like, how the heck did you guys only have zero for the entire year? But that's the reason those numbers are that way.
Well, and, and it looks like everything happened in October for the whole year.
Yeah.
Forty-nine in October and forty-nine for the year.
Yes.
That's not really, you're just getting started.
Yes.
So the whole, the whole goal was is to break it down, you know, everybody has a clearer picture and understanding.
I like, I like it. It makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, and, and you know, it takes time to get some of these properties abated.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, discussing with Captain, uh, you know, we, we talked about it, we discussed it. I was like, let, let's come up with an idea where we're able to paint the picture, right? It's, it, it takes some time to get to where we get, need to get to, uh, get a residence baited, so. Moving on to the most common violations, obviously accumulations, that's one of the biggest things we've, we've been seeing. In twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and fifty-four. Um, as of right now, we're at a hundred and sixty-nine. Total for the month of October is eleven. Um, we do get a lot of accumulations, whether it be in the backyard or the front yard. Um, our code compliance team, um, is actively out there looking for those violations, um, and obviously taking enforcement action. Trees is another one. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we had sixty-five. You're, as in twenty twenty-five, we're at a hundred and forty-eight.
Is that trees that need to be cut up higher above the road in the south?
Yes, sir.
Is that what that is? Okay.
Yes, sir. And then, and then one of the, the other things that I want to discuss is the permits required. One of the biggest things also that we've been seeing is a lot of people doing work without permits. Um, our Community Compliance Team has been, has done a fantastic job of, uh, making contact, putting stop work orders to those individuals and making them come and get the proper permitting to get the, the work, the work done. So, uh, obviously you could see there, in twenty twenty-four, there was only twenty-six. This year, we're up to sixty-five. And for the month of October, we had five. Um, some of the accomplishments from the Community Compliance Team, um, actually completed sixteen spayed neutered procedures for the shelter pets and host, hosted their monthly vaccination clinic on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Um, on October first, Catherine and Louis attended the Animal Cruelty Investigations Training to enhance, uh, enforcement and case management practices. On October eighteen, staff and volunteers proudly represented the department at the BISD, uh, Big Wheels, Big Dreams Community Event, engaging with families and showcasing animal services. On October twenty, twenty-first, um, Louis attended the Shelter Development Training in Fort Worth, followed by Catherine and Louise, um, attending a similar course in Carrollton on October twenty-second. During these sessions, they gain valuable customer service techniques and enhance community engagement and shelter operations. On October twenty-fourth, shelter staff and volunteers participated in the Haunted Hills Community Event, promoting pet adoption and responsible pet ownership. Catherine, Louis and Louise completed a professional development for shelters course, gaining valuable customer experience techniques and strengthening community interactions. And finally, the team successfully closed out nearly all open cases from previous fiscal year with only three percent remaining open. This is a strong testament to their dedication and efficiency in this, in this unit. I also wanted, before I move on, I, I'm gonna touch base on a couple of cases. Kind of give you all a case update on some of the abatements that we've done. As men, as we mentioned in this PowerPoint, obviously there is a process, uh, to where we need to get to abatement, right? It doesn't just happen overnight. Um, I can tell you, um, in the month of November, uh, we abated two residences. One in the thirty-five hundred block of London, the other one in the seventy-one hundred block of Maple Park. Um, I can't go into much detail on the, um, London one because we have an open criminal case. But, uh, that was a residence that a lot of neighbors were complaining about rodents, the smell, um, and vangreins being in the backyard. Um, I can tell you all, um, when we got there and we abated this, uh, residence, we located a stolen trailer. Um, and so that's why it turned into a criminal case and that's why it's currently being investigated. Um, another one was the seventy-one hundred block of Maple Park. Um, that was a house, uh, with a lot of accumulation in the back, backyard area. And again, that was another residence that we had complaints from the neighbors. I know there's another one, um, that our Co, Community Compliance made contact with in the sixty-seven hundred block of Brooks regarding a barn, um, a two-story barn. Um, our Community Compliance Team also made contact with those residents. They did acknowledge that the, the, the barn is in dilapidated conditions. Um, they were given, you can either demolish or if you want to repair it, that's up to them. Um, and they, the resident understood and they advised they would fix it. So, um, those are just some of the main, uh, cases that we've been working through. The reason I'm talking about that right now is because the process started back in October. We didn't get this done until late November, when we were, we were out there getting those, those properties done, so. Um, with that being said, if y'all have any questions for me?
I do. How many of those seven hundred and ninety-three, uh, violations are the violations that you have? Let's just say, I don't know which number it is, but how many of those are from residents or how many of those are from y'all driving around and finding that?
What, what slide was that?
That's community contacts. So that is, that is every time that they make contact with a resident of our city re, relative to a code issue. So a lot of times when they start with the courtesy notice issued.
Okay.
That's a contact. So they're also, as they're doing a courtesy notice, it can be a verbal notice that they have accumulations or some other type of code issue. And so that's a contact. So anytime that they go and make contact with a resident to discuss any type of code issue, that's a community contact.
Okay, so is it fair to say that seven hundred and ninety-three? So how many of that seven hundred and ninety-three are initiated from residents calling in or y'all driving around and finding those?
I, I, I would say most of the time it's from our Community Compliance Team driving out there. Obviously, we, they're all, they're dual-purpose. Um, so one of them takes the north, one of them takes the south. But as they're out there driving, they'll stop and they'll mark out on those calls, um, and they'll take that initiative, hey, there's a violation here, whatever it may be, whether it be trees, accumulations, whatever it is, um, it's most of the time them. Now, there are situations where, uh, residents do call, like specifically like the ones we, we've discussed, the London and Maple Park, where, you know, they are a issue to the community, um, but most of the time it's our Community Compliance Team being out there and being proactive.
To patrols.
Yeah.
Cause I just know, I hear some of the residents make statements that, well, that's not gonna get taken care of unless we can keep calling it in. So I was just curious if that was a true statement. I didn't think so, but, so I used to see co-compliance driving, driving around quite a bit. But I don't see that much now, but I know that, uh, one of the co-compliance people live in that same area. So I know he's probably sees what we see too, so.
Absolutely, he does. Uh, he is aware of, of some of the issues that are, are over there. Um, he stays on, on top of that stuff. They're out there driving, so I, uh, they stay busy, I'll say that.
Oh, yeah.
I think one of the challenges is our residents kind of generally expect, hey, I called the city and then a couple of days later, somebody's out there with lights flashing and, you know, the backyards are cleaned up and it doesn't happen like that.
And that's why I had them add the, you know, the timeframe from the ten days, the ten days. So that's thirty days that we have to provide the notices and then if it goes to citation, right, then we give. But if it goes to abatement, then they have to secure a search warrant, um, or an admin, not a search warrant, sorry, talk, wrong language, administrative warrant. And, you know, that takes a period of time. And so when they call in and they don't see anything, it's, you know, it can be forty-five days before.
There's stuff going on.
There is a lot of things going on behind the scenes. And some of the cases that he briefed on tonight, I know, have been some of the longer-standing issues that we're trying to address and, um, you know, get to the point of abatement. That, that one where the stolen vehicle is one of those properties that had several bus, RV, whatever it was, you know, that, um, that I know members of council have, have, uh, talked to me about. And it turned into a criminal case because it was a stolen vehicle.
And the other problem, Tree Sakes, remember, is we have a abatement budget issue.
There's that, there's that.
We're gonna fix that. My question is, and this is, this is for the life of me, I, I've said this over and over like a broken record and I'm gonna continue to say it over and over. I'll look at this process right here that you have on the screen about the, you know, initial courtesy notices, the notice of violation. And I, and, and what I constantly see are items that have been out of compliance for a year, two years. So why am I gonna think that that's ever gonna be taken care of when, when they're all passed, all of these thirty-day, forty-five-day, whatever? I don't know that it has to go all the way to abatement. Maybe it does, I don't really know. But when, for two, four, five, fourteen years, you still see the same cars parked on the same grass that don't work and a horse trailer that never moves and a house with metal containers in the driveway since early summer. How can you tell me that this process works? That's where I get confused because over and over and over, and you know this, I have brought up some specific areas in the city and it has gone on for three hundred and sixty-five days plus and nothing has changed. Why do I want to think that these numbers give me any type of comfort?
The only thing I can say, uh, Councilmember Witt, is that we are trying to be more consistent in holding to these timeframes and making sure that when they do not meet that and when it goes into an enforcement, that we are going to the only, the only option we have is abatement for the city to bear that cost to clean up that property, which is what we're doing. And then we have to, from there, we have to be mindful of the budget and having those funds. But, um, over the last year, the team that we've had in place for this last year through the training, cause we've had to get them trained, but they are at a point now where I think you will see a lot of these longstanding issues that have been, I mean, we recognize that fully. But it's a, a team that's in place now that, that they've received their training. They have great leadership under Lieutenant Ga, Gaetan, who's staying on top of it. And I would hope that you can see some improvement into these longstanding issues, um, being rectified. The, the property that you're speaking of with this, the storage containers, that is another property that's, you know, in line, uh, that I believe is, with JP on the substandard side. Yes. So, you know, when we, you know, there's the abatement and then there's substandard. So that particular property where you're, that's, they've been there for over a year, however long, that is actually one that JP, we've turned over now as a substandard property. So.
A- and just, just to hit on some of that stuff, um, I can say this, um, as I've taken over this unit, um, I made it very clear that we're gonna be very proactive. I don't know what's going on in, in years past, but I'll tell you that our team is out there and we will take the necessary steps to clean up the city. Um, obviously we know that we, there is a budget and we understand that, but we have a list, I'll tell you that, that. We prioritize a lot of this, especially some of these bigger issues, um, on some of these residents. So, uh, we are working on it.
Well, it's our job to.
I, I can tell you, since, uh, since I got on council four years ago, w- we generally weren't doing a very good job of this. And, and we, the council at that time started harping on this pretty serious. Um, and so it is just taking some time to get the right staff in place that we, we had a lot of turnover in the.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
Compliance issues. And then, and I think the first year I was here, we had like a five thousand dollar abatement budget or something.
Well, you know, and as I said, it's the council and we, we've talked about this. You know, we, we've got to next year in budget, we, we've got to fix this problem for, for.
Right.
For, for these guys because, you know, I, I understand now, and thank you for that explanation because I understand now. You know, that when you get through all of these processes, at the end of the day, um, the, the abatement process is very expensive. And we can't really expect to send these guys out on the street and, and do that, but yet turn around. Uh, uh, I hear fully what you're saying about, you know, once we get to this, this po- point and talking about zero tolerance, you know? Um, uh, uh, the, the cost, the cost of that. And, uh, that was a very big eye opener for me for, with the way you explained it very well at, at our last meeting.
We can get all these awaiting abatement.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, if they process through the system, it's waiting abatement, then it's sitting on our desk because the funding isn't there.
Right.
But they should all be at that point. Finds building every day so that potentially we could get these things turned over on.
Yeah, agree with that.
On back taxes kind of thing.
Uh, totally agree with that, but, um, so we'll, we'll work as a, you know, as a, as a council on, on budget next, next year. So if we can, I hear you loud and clear.
Let me say this too, with, with, with these guys.
In the meantime, let me say something, John. We're short on money, so some areas we may have some excess money this year. Is there a budget, budget amendment we can do to put more money into that account? And that's something Sean is gonna have to look at for us as well.
Yeah.
He's shaking his head, yes, he's gonna, he's gonna look into that. So maybe we can put more money in during the year to help you do your job better.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
We would appreciate it.
Let me, let me say this too, with, with, with proactive versus reactive. Uh, this is years ago, I mean, ten, fifteen years ago, we had a code enforcement officer who told people flat out. He didn't, he didn't hide it. He said, I don't go to people's houses unless I get a complaint. Cause he didn't, he didn't wanna, uh, you know, he didn't wanna bother people. And he was employed with our city a long time and, and finally left. Um, and we've been getting better since then, but, uh, I mean, it just with, with long-term issues. Uh, just with a lot of our issues, uh, where the city hasn't done anything for a long time, it takes so much, so much to catch up. So, uh, these guys are definitely trying their best and we all know that up here, we all know that up here, but yeah.
If you guys, if you guys remember, I asked Chief if, how much if we had half a million dollars, could, could we spend that, right? She goes, oh yeah, we give every penny. So that was, that was more for us, like, oh, how big a problem is this? That is a really big problem.
And that, and that's up high in the sky, I mean, that's big, but.
Right.
You know, just the point is, is that these, these abatements that they just did, that he just spoke about were actually last fiscal year. That had to go whole because we ran out of money.
Right, right, yeah.
Um, and so, you know, and they're, they're constantly calling me on properties that we can, but we do have to prioritize when we have, within the budget. And so, you know, it's, it's kind of the way we, we prior, we kind of run things very parallel and how we do on the police side and the criminal investigations. You know, it's, it's a, it's the severity of the case and the resources that we have to work a case versus, you know, a less priority. It's, it's very similar in how that we have to have approach it with code because then we also have a budget constraint where, you know, we don't necessarily on the, on the criminal investigation side. So, you know, we're doing and we're navigating, we're gonna get counsel, that feedback that you guys want relative to, you know, when we run out of the money we have. And then how many cases we have lined up and what that dollar figure looks like to give you a better.
That'd be great.
A better idea.
Yeah.
Of what that is.
Yeah, cause I feel like we're, now that, you know, you, we've talked about this.
The teams in place.
I feel like they're out there, you know, busting their tails and, and, and just to find out that they're, at the end of the day, their hands are really tied because we don't have the. That's just not fair. That's just not, not, not fair to these guys.
Make sure they have the tools.
Okay.
Okay, I have a really off-the-wall question for you. Of all the guest houses that have been approved in this city, the ones that are in people's backyards that they live in, but they're not supposed to have a stove or something like that. How many of those inspections do we do on a yearly basis? Cause I, aren't they supposed to be inspected every year?
Once a year, yeah. They are supposed to be once a year.
So I can tell you, since I've taken over this, this unit this year, um, I haven't had the knowledge of that, um, of us doing that. Um, but I, something that we can look into.
Will you please make that a part of the report for us?
Is that, like, you're talking about building inspections?
I, I can add some, some information here. So we only have technically like four approved guest houses in the community that were approved via the SGP process after our zoning ordinance was amended. So we do have an annual, um, uh, inspection process. I know that it hasn't even been a year since you've been, been in this position. It's kind of a annual thing that we will do at the turn of the year. So January twenty twenty-six is when we handle those inspections.
Okay, so we got four coming up.
We will note take them on the report.
I have.
That's JP.
Was that?
I was just introducing you.
Oh.
Honorary PD.
Yeah, you got deputized right there.
There you go, there you go.
Hope I'll have you become a deputy. Uh, quick question, what is three percent represent? Is that three thousand cases still open, three cases? What, what is three percent?
Last year, uh, last year's total cases, look at your number.
So that's three percent of, eight oh three?
We were talking about.
Three percent of eight oh three.
Three percent somewhere.
Last slide. Oh, I didn't hear on the bottom.
Bottom, bottom bullet.
It's gonna be the total number of open cases from last year.
I don't have an exact number for you. Um, I would have to get that.
Okay.
Um. I, I, I don't wanna give you a number because I really don't know it.
Okay, I, I, I'll look forward to it, thank you.
Yeah.
Good job, thank you all.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Eric, you're the closer, okay?
Eric Meldez, Parks and Recreation Director, City of Werson Hills, item seven B, the Parks and Recreation Departmental Report. We've been busy in the parks division, uh, some updates right there in the screen there. Uh, we, thanks to the mayor, he sent us an email and, uh, we were some lights that were out at Creek Trail. Uh, but we also, uh, sent some folks out to Rosebud Park, take a look at those things, top to bottom. Uh, some of those lights were repaired, some of those lights we were, uh, waiting on fixtures and some of those lights were waiting on replacement bulbs. So, uh, we're still, they're still underway.
Also, they, they go off at a pretty early time, is what I've been told.
So I, I do know it was, uh, Mr. Garza and that group there, uh, there is a timer out there, we'll, uh, we'll adjust it. I know they were wanting to kinda see the park during the last storm, uh, we'll see if we can keep them on a little later. You can't necessarily see the entire park, but we'll, uh, we'll adjust the timer.
See the water.
Yeah.
That's it.
See the water coming.
Uh, staff also coordinated, uh, the, the repairs to the monument lights, so those have been out for quite some time. Uh, and we, I just got confirmation, uh, from Captain Miller that those were still, uh, on this evening, so that's great, great news. I haven't been out there to check them out. Uh, staff also coordinated a pretty massive, uh, irrigation repair over at the animal shelter, so that got, uh, completed. We assisted with the link weight room and gym floor replacement project. Then obviously it's been a heavy fall with a lot of special events, so our parks division led, uh, planning for those events, uh, over the last several months. Uh, in the rec division, some things to highlight, we've got our winter break camps coming up. We got camp one, two, and three, uh, December, camp one is December nineteenth, twenty-second and twenty-third. Uh, camp two, twenty-ninth through the thirty-first, and then the third camp, January second and fifth. So that's good service to the community, get those kids out of, out of the house and, uh, give some mom and dad some peace and quiet at the, at the home front. Uh, some of the new programs that we have, we've got an Alpha AI Academy that's using our, uh, gaming room. We've got, it's basically, uh, a small, um, uh, homeschool kind of, uh, program there that we don't run. We, we, uh, rent out the space, so, uh, that takes up the space between the hours of eight and I believe three-thirty in the afternoon. So they, they do schoolwork, then they break and do some, uh, activities in the gym, basketball, a lot of basketball heavy activities, so. Uh, and then our life childcare, they just started, uh, December first in the bird's nest. So it's an onsite, uh, childcare, uh, vendor. We contracted with them, they're paying a rental fee and so we only have one little kid. Uh, Val's daughter is in that program, uh, but we hope to expand to get twelve, uh, daycare kids in that. Our after-school program is pretty healthy at seventy-six, we're trying to get, uh, enrollment up a little bit more. And then our average attendance for the seniors is, uh, two hundred and five. Uh, link floor, if you haven't come and, uh, visited the new link floor, uh, that project has been completed. It started, uh, November seventh, it was completed on December third, so we removed the old floor. Uh, we shot blast at the concrete foundation sealed and also prepped the floor for the new flooring. Obviously the mondo flooring went down and, uh, you know, the upgraded surface has been great. We've received nothing but positive feedback so far. We're gonna, we're, there's some minor tweaks that we're making, you know, some of the benches that were in different locations have, have pivoted to different areas and whatnot, so. Uh, we're, we're still adjusting. One of the other things that we did was we expanded our weight room into the curved area of that floor that wasn't really getting used. We cut the track inside the wall, so it's given us a little bit more space, change the dynamic in our weight room as well. Our events and tourism division, very, uh, very busy fall, so it started off with the seventy-fifth anniversary. We let those efforts, obviously haunted hills was well attended with seven hundred guests. Veterans Day, you guys were in attendance, we had around fifty guests. Our tree, tree lighting last, uh, last Friday was also well attended, around twenty-five hundred guests. And one of the new programs that Corey at the link, who's our coordinator, put together was a stargazing party at Rosebud Park. We had about fifty, uh, five guests out there and so we hope to run that back next year. And then, uh, no break, right? We probably give them a two, three day break and then we're already starting to plan for our Easter celebration in the spring. So I know we, we had moved that, uh, event to this property, the link plaza, and so, uh, with Rosebud and the approval of the project done, I, we're probably gonna keep. The, uh, Easter egg celebration in the, in the plaza, uh, next year, so. And with that, if you have any questions.
I have to make one comment.
Sure.
Getting that floor is one of the fastest projects I've ever seen with the city. I mean, we approve it and it's done.
All right, we like it. One, one thing to add to that is, uh, obviously we did the floor, uh, we did get a new floor scrubber and so we're waiting two weeks and RFS is gonna come out and, uh, kinda show us how to use it. We did use it on the tile floor, so, uh, yeah, we're gonna start getting that process together. One of the things I've told staff is that's our responsibility, we're, you know, we're gonna care for that floor and we're gonna put some, uh, processes in place to, to make sure that stays in good working order.
And the other thing I'd like to see put on or ask for or whatever you gotta do, but the lighting in that plaza.
Yep.
Was, is awful.
Yep. I've got one bulb out here, one, uh, light fixture out, if you didn't see it right in front of the, uh, the pavilion that's out, uh, we're working on that right now. We've got a quote about two thousand dollars, there's about, not that they're all burnt out, there's about eighteen of them in the plaza, so. Not only are we trying to secure the fixture, but for years to come, what happens next?
There's gonna be something to do with the lighting, I mean, cause it, it was just terrible.
One of the things that we did at our office right across the street, we had a bunch of spotlights that were out. There's about twelve bulbs that hadn't been changed out ever and so we installed new spotlights out there and they all work, so that's, you know, it's great.
I mean, the generator light thing put out more light than ours did, so.
And the other thing I know that was, uh, it was a topic earlier, the tree trimming, they're out and about in the community to, uh, trim those trees back. Tomorrow morning at seven AM, they're gonna be over here at the post office, uh, trimming back that big tree and, you know, so hopefully we get it manicured and stay off that flagpole. Um, yeah, and I also had them take a look, we're probably gonna go out there tomorrow. The mag, I think they're the magnolia trees in front of El Chico, they're kind of overgrown, they kinda hide El Chico a little bit. Uh, we're gonna see what we can do a little differently there, not, uh, take them down, but just how do we manicure a little bit more? Improve the aesthetics. Um, I think that's all I can share, anything else?
Speakers by Easter.
Right.
Oh, yes, okay, we could, all right. Is that, is that a challenge?
There's a speaker by Easter, right?
We'll, uh, make some poke calls tomorrow, yeah. We did, we did, uh, get some pricing from the vendor that did the, uh, the link AV, uh, project. And so they threw out a number briefly, it was about seventy, eighty thousand dollars to do some speakers up and down the plaza, so. Well, we'll get some firm pricing with other vendors as well.
Good.
To make sure that happens.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be awesome if you could get that down.
Cool.
Was as a unofficial clearinghouse for the link floor progress. Um, probably, I've talked to probably twenty-five or thirty players, everybody loves the floor. With absolutely zero negative feedback on it, so.
Good, yes, sir.
As you're thinking about speakers, think about being able to use that mic between the link and the library so that if we have a, like we had with the automobile stuff, that. You won't get feedback there?
Right, absolutely.
That'll be, that'll be a challenge, but worth looking at.
Yeah, I, I can tell you this, after, especially after the last tree lighting, we've gotta reassess kind of what we do, how we do it. Uh, just kind of the, the staging, what the expectation about, yeah, it's, uh, we've outgrown what we do and it's just the normal, uh, stage speakers. We've gotta go a little bit bigger, whether it's a, a totally different vendor to provide speakers on, on, during those events or, you know, something that's permanent.
Well, hopefully it's gonna be tied into the permanent, but.
Yeah.
Uh, but anyway, consider feedback.
All right.
Cause that'll be a pain in the.
Anything else?
Good job, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Yep.
Councilman Eastep?
Well, community interest items for December twenty twenty-five. The link membership sale is on from now until January fifteenth. Snag twenty percent off annual memberships and unlock everything we've got. Pickleball, basketball, fitness classes, the fitness center, volleyball night, senior socials, indoor playground, games and more. Members also receive at least ten percent off personal training, monthly programs and activities. Come play, move, lift and connect with us at the link. Winter break camps at the link, uh, the link is hosting winter break camps for kids age five to twelve. These camps offer full days of activities including crafts, group games, outdoor play, gym time, field trip option. Perfect for families needing fun and safe childcare while school is out. Camp runs from seven thirty AM to six thirty PM and afternoon snacks provided and families should send a sack lunch. The sessions this year, camp number one, December nineteen, twenty-two and twenty-three, one hundred dollars per child. Camp number two is December twenty-ninth to thirty-first, a hundred dollars per child, includes a field trip on December thirtieth. Camp closes at six PM on December thirty-first. And camp number three, January second and fifth, uh, seventy dollars per child. Senior lunch bunch and bingo Thursday, December tenth, noon to two PM at the link, free for link members, fifty-five and older. A recommended three dollar donation is suggested for non-members. Advanced registration is required. Tarrant County Food Pantry, Thursday, December tenth, five thirty to seven PM. Richland Hills Baptist Church, free groceries for any Tarrant County resident. Food pantry has been moved indoors to Richland Hills Baptist Church, six eight five two Baker Boulevard. The new location will be indoors and will allow the food pantry to be open regardless of weather conditions. And programs at the library, the Richland Hill Literary Club, Tuesday, December the ninth, uh, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM. Do you enjoy books of all kinds? So do we, only have time in the evenings, we're the perfect book club for those who prefer the twilight hours. Come talk with us as we explore books on a variety of topics from a wide range of genres. Each month we enjoy a new book and great conversation and sometimes a snack. Uh, wrapping room is December ninth, two to twenty-third, Tuesdays through Fridays, nine AM to seven PM. Need to wrap a present or four, we've got you covered from boxes and bags to ribbons and bows. The library has all the supplies you need to make your holidays a little bit easier. Library Light Lane, December fifth to January the fifth, every night from five PM to midnight. Looking for a quick way to relax and get in the holiday spirit? Why not take a short stroll through the library's festive outdoor sidewalk? And finally, senior social time with Miss Anne and friends every Thursday from ten to. And finally, senior social time with Miss Anne and friends every Thursday from ten to eleven-thirty AM. That's a wrap.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, happy holidays.
Meeting adjourned.
See you next year.